Break out the sweater for one day?
Yeah, one day.
All right, here we go, let's get this started. Like to welcome everyone to the Monday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular session of Lake Jackson City Council. It's held at the twenty-five Oak Drive, Lake Jackson, Texas. We began the evening with Pledge Allegiance by Councilman Sinhanya. If you'll join me in invocation. Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts. Thank, thank you for your, for the meaning, many blessings you bestow on us. And Father, we thank you for the first responders, the servicemen and women and employees. We ask that you keep them safe. We also ask for your continued help with the people impacted by Hurricane Ian. Father, please give the council the wisdom, guidance, and courage to make the decisions for our community. In your name, we offer up this prayer, amen. Just a note on the agenda, regular agenda, we have item five has been requested be removed and deferred to November seventh. We have some people that have signed up to speak on item five, so I'll move you up to visitors' comments. So you have an opportunity to talk to us. Since you made, since you came, made it to the meeting. Move on to speaking of visitor comments, we'll move to those. And we have visitors' comments, and this is an item. This item is available for those citizens wishing to address City Council on issues not on the agenda. City Council may not discuss any presented issue, nor may they, may any action be taken on any issue at this time. Anytime, any item presented could be considered for placement on the agenda of a future regular scheduled meeting. So we have Mr. Hunter, you're up for visitors' comments, so probably a couple of things want to talk about.
My name is Gary Hunter, one seventeen Mesquite Street. I've been following the Anyway Street scenario for quite some time now, you know, as you all probably know. There was an accident resulting from an overspeed on Anyway Street that ran into a person's house. For, unfortunately, no one was injured. But that's been almost a year ago. I can't believe we're still discussing this, okay? I know that we have, you know, traffic mitigation or calming procedures that take place. And I have a particular issue with the surveys that we do, which we employ this ninety-five percentile rule. And I've said this before in previous meetings, that it's not the ninety-five percentile we're looking for, it's the outliers. Those are the ones that are causing the problems. And we can only address them in a couple of ways. Constantly leave a police officer on patrol, okay, which is impossible for the most part, okay? You can do it for a period of time, but as soon as they're gone, the problem comes back. So you need to have some sort of a static, a static situation that takes care of the problem. And, and speed bumps is, is a solution. That is a long stretch of road. Now, this is big traffic problem, and all has to do with rush hour and school hours. And when Oyster Creek backs up from that way to two eighty-eight at that traffic light. People that use that way to commute towards that destination wind up on the back of a line at That Way Street. But if they were to take a shortcut through Anyway, which is the first available street to cut through, which is a straight fly-through, they'll take that. If they can't, if they miss that one, they do Mesquite, they miss that, that one, they do Bogomilea. I live in that neighborhood, I walk that neighborhood, and I see people speeding down those roads all the time, just for that particular reasons. They're not residents. Residents know me, I talk to them, I, I stop them, say, you were speeding, slow it down, and they agree, you know, they, they messed up. Now, you get back to the point, is that we really do need to address how we measure these problems and, and apply corrective measures. And I was really hoping that we would have a discussion about that tonight. I mentioned it several times, I think, in a, in a email to each and every one of you. And I volunteered to help Mr. Blanchard talk to the neighbors on That Way Street, no reply. So I don't know what the deal is, either you guys are shutting me out or something to that effect.
No, there's, we're, we're not, we're not doing that. The reason why I was delayed was because Mr. Blanchard is wanting to go and speak to residents. And he was, he was, he was out of town, just like I was last week, it was, and then he was ill. So he wanted more time to be able to go door-to-door and talk to citizens.
All terribly convenient if you had called me, I could have helped.
I'm sorry, I did never see an email from you, I am sorry.
Well, apparently, the email address that's on the website for you is incorrect, because it bounced.
Oh, bounced, okay.
We check on that.
Yes, sir.
At any rate, discussions on Next Door in recent days indicates that we have a big problem across the city. Several streets are complaining about speeders. And what can they do to get, you know, a speed bump, okay? And I pointed them in the right direction through the Traffic Commission first, and then after the Traffic Commission makes the recommendations, it comes to the City Council. Which is kind of a, was taking us almost a year to deal with the issue on Anyway Street. We need to address this in a, in a, in a way, and I, I'm thinking, you know, everybody says, well, speed bumps cause other problems, okay? Excessive noise from people slowing down and then accelerating away from the speed bump. And then other people say that speed bumps say that, that there's potential liability issues for the city and the fact that people can damage their cars. I argue that there's a curb on each side of the road, that's not a liability issue. And the driver can hit those curbs, and they have, in these accidents, okay? And nobody gets liable for that, okay? So I, I think, you know, there should be some quick action done. I want the, I want the council to consider, or the Traffic Commission to consider even temporary road bumps. You move them in place, you get a result, it gets the message to each and every one of the drivers that uses that road, that they need to watch their speed. You pull it back up, you do another speed study, if they start speeding, the outliers start popping up again, you put them back down. That way, the neighbors don't have to put up with the noise and that problem all the time, okay? I think, I think that sums up everything I got to say about Anyway Street.
All right, was there another thing that wasn't on the agenda that you want to talk about? Just what visitors' comments?
A previous meeting about the rabbits and the chickens.
Okay, well, that's an agenda item, so.
Okay, right.
Sherri, you're down, do you want to? Okay, all right. All right, any other visitors' comments? I don't have anybody else down, so. All right, we'll move on to presentations.
All right, so this is a proclamation. This proclamation, I, Gerald Rosnowski, by virtue authorized, authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, to hereby proclaim November sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, as the Brazosport Symphony Orchestra Day. Whereas Brazosport Symphony Orchestra is celebrating their fortieth season, performing since November seventh, nineteen eighty-two. And whereas Brazosport Symphony, God, my lips are not working. Orchestra is a dedicated group of men and women whose purpose is to promote an interest in music, culture activities, and culture activities that are valuable resources as well as a source of civic pride to the people of our community. And whereas, these forty seasons of music have been enjoyed by the community, and we appreciate all that the Brazosport Symphony Orchestra has done to enrich the lives of men. Under the direction of conductor Brian Casey, we wish the Brazosport Symphony Orchestra many more years ahead. Whereas, the Brazosport Symphony Orchestra plays an important role in enrichment of the lives of our citizens. And so, we ask our citizens to recognize the efforts and accomplishments of the Brazosport Symphony Orchestra. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city, City Council of the city of Lake Jackson, do hereby proclaim November sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Brazosport Symphony Orchestra Day. And the city of Lake Jackson, who like to express our sincere appreciation to the state of hope for their vital contribute, contribution to the community over the past forty years.
Thank you very much.
All right, you want to tell us something about the orchestra?
I can. Briefly, should I face the audience or the council, or both? So I'm Paul Monsky, and I've been with Brazosport Symphony Orchestra for many years. I actually played in the very first concert, I was two, I was, I was in high school, senior in high school when the orchestra performed. Then I left, and I've been back for about seventeen years. I play the bassoon, and I'm also currently the president of the Brazosport Symphony Orchestra Council. So we're very excited to be here, we're, we're so proud to play in the Clarion, if it's not the end of the Clarion, it's just an incredible venue. We're so lucky to have that partnership with the, the college that we're allowed to perform there. And so, we play pops music, we just had the Texas Country Post here in October and had a really great time with those guys. We play pops, we play classical music. We're having our fortieth anniversary concert on November sixth, we're playing Beethoven. So, and, and a little happy birthday medley, so anyway, I invite you all to come out, I hope to see you at the symphony, and please, we've got some materials we'll leave over at the side if you'd like to pick something up on the way out, so, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll send, see you on Sunday.
Yes, sir.
All right, next presentation, we have Brazosport Fine Arts Center, Wes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, how are you tonight?
Wes is the president, right? Of, of Brazosport Arts, right?
Executive Director.
Okay.
Yeah.
And one thing's unique about, Wes is very good because, about coming to council and explaining to us how they're spending our hotel occupancy tax that we pass on to them.
Thank you, we, we, we take, we take accountability very, very seriously at the Center for the Arts and Sciences. We are very grateful, we would not be able to do the great work that we do at the Center for the Arts and Sciences without that support. And so, joining me tonight, of course, we do, we're so glad to have that proclamation to the Symphony Orchestra, we're super proud of them as well, and we, we support that organization. We also have the president of Brazosport Finance Council with us tonight, Jim Hill, and our treasurer, Tom Fowler. And I see Caroline Edwards back there, she is one of our longtime volunteers as well, and so, she's not here for this necessarily, but, hey, I'm going to point her out anyway. We have a lot of community support, we have a lot of volunteers. In fact, during Madrigal years, we have about five hundred volunteers across all of our partner groups who come and, and, and help support what we do. So we work hard to, to, to bring a lot of value in, in, in arts, culture, history, science, everything else. For those who are, who are not familiar with the Center for the Arts and Sciences, we're more than just a building, but we are a building of forty-four thousand square feet. But we also have resident programs that we support, both in the building and outside. So that includes Brazosport Center Stages, which has been around since nineteen forty-three, continuous operation, no missed seasons even during COVID, which is pretty remarkable. Brazosport Museum of Natural Science, the BASF Planetarium, Brazosport Art League, and of course, also, we support Brazosport Symphony Orchestra. How do we do that? We provide administrative facilities and marketing support for all these programs that bring real vitality and an elevated quality of life for our residents, and provide reasons for visitors to travel to our community, as well as being an important resource for visitors who are already here, looking for an enriching experience. As far as tourism goes, we desire to contribute significantly to tourism in this region. We know that travelers here will spend their money if we give them a reason to stick around, and so we work to do that. There is a memorandum of understanding drafted and signed by both Texans for the Arts and the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association that provides guidelines for determining the impact on tourism for organizations like the one that I represent. If it sounds like I'm going fast, I know you all have an entire agenda, and so I'm trying to kind of respect your time here. I am proud to report that our robust campaign to promote cultural tourism and hotel stays with the following actions. One is that they ask that, that our, the recipient works with its area lodging operators and/or convention and visitors' bureaus to promote local arts events and, and similar also with the museum, through hotel concierge services, training of hotel staff, and all of that. We are continuing our hotel relations campaign to communicate directly with hotel staff and managers, alerting them to the activities, exhibits, and events associated with the center. In fact, last week, we went all the way down Hotel Row, delivering cookies and schedules, and we continue, we'll continue to do that every month so that they can, whenever the guests come and say, what's there to do, they have plenty of options that, that we provide. Also, that, that we book hotel rooms for visiting visitors and such, and so we make a standard practice that both constant, the constant contact, which goes out to six thousand email recipients, and gets refreshed, and then, of course, there's a little bit of, you know, it starts to go down if people unsubscribe, and then we go back up every time we have new people register through our ticketing system. That we make standard practice that both the constant contact and our ticketing system's customer management service encourages people to, attending the events from out of town to stay in area hotels, and especially if they are local and have out-of-town guests coming, why do you have to put them up in your house, right? Just tell them to go, we'll have breakfast in the morning, so come, come and, and stay in a hotel, and we really work to do that. We also market our events outside of the local area through standard media promotions or advertisements, websites, mailing lists, and such. An example of that is, you can see that the, the current Texas Highways magazine has a half-page ad for our biennial Elizabethan Madrigal Feast, is an example of, of us really working to do that. Another is that a funded entity may show direct impact by using local lodging facilities for galas and such. This last year, we, in one of, in, excuse me, in the, in the, sorry, now I'm blanking on the name, not the Staybridge, but.
Marriott.
Marriott, yes, thank you. We, we hosted our Bed on the Arts Gala, so that was a special event that we were able to work with the hotel there to promote. Also that we, that we also find out where our attendees are coming from, not only through zip codes, but also because we do know sometimes that locals buy the tickets, we also ask the question, how many in your party are coming from outside Brazoria County? Knowing those are most likely to, to have a higher tourism impact. And so we've had, in the gallery and in the museum, we've had tens of thousands of visitors since the COVID shutdown. We now average thirty-five percent of the visitors coming during the daytime hours come from outside the county. And that's because we asked them that question. From the time we opened after the COVID closures were lifted, we increased that year, from that day that we opened through the next year, a hundred and twenty-six percent over the previous year. So actually, it was the year right when we opened, the next year was a hundred and twenty-six percent increase. Well, that's not a big stretch, because everything was shut down with COVID, no one was going anywhere. But the next year, the next year, in the same time period, we have increased visitor counts thirty-six percent over that same time period. So we're really working hard on our marketing to get people here. Center Stages, for instance, Disney's Beauty and the Beast, seventeen percent of the attendees were from out-of-town guests. And with the Elizabethan Madrigal Feast, the last time we were able to do it before COVID was two thousand and eighteen. Twenty-five percent of the guests of our ten sold-out performances were from outside the county. This year, we are on track to beat that record, we are so far, we've sold over half of our inventory, and twenty-seven percent of those people are coming from outside Brazoria County because of the efforts that we make in bringing people in. We also work to, to make sure that we're, we're spreading the word. Right now, we're developing video promotional pieces for both the center and the Elizabethan Madrigal Feast to attract the attention of media groups outside of the area. But bottom line, we couldn't do what we do without the support of the city of Lake Jackson. We're very grateful for that support, and we can, we hope to continue to, to, to do the city proud over the coming years. And I will at this time take any questions that you may have.
Do you want to tell us about the tickets that are on sale right now?
Oh, yeah, Elizabethan Madrigal Feast, well, first of all, we've been doing the Elizabeth, how many of you, has anyone been to the Elizabethan Madrigal Feast? Okay, so they might be able to explain it better than, than I can, just as a visitor experience. But in short, it is a fully immersive music, dance, and performance, period, Renaissance-based experience. It is fully immersive, you have servers and performers and everything on all sides of you and the entire thing. The costumes have been built from our volunteer designers and, and people who put the costume construction people over, since nineteen eighty-eight. In fact, Tom's wife Cheryl is the lead designer for that, it's exquisite, it's probably our most valuable asset, at least on the theater side of things. So much so that we have to have a secret place that we store them, so no one else raids that closet, right? It's just for Madrigal Feast. And we've been on sale since, since October first to the general public. Again, ticket sales are very, very strong, we have people calling in from all over the state interested in, in attending this particular event.
That's amazing, thank you, Wes.
Thank you so much, any other questions?
What's that, like, age, age restrictions, is it for all ages?
With that one, I would say, I would say that probably toddlers are probably a little bit too young, just because it's a, it's a long experience, it's about a three-hour show. It's a full evening with dinner and everything else. But we do, you know, we have the dinosaurs there in the museum, you know, I mean, that's something that, that kids love. We know that we've expanded the, the Planetarium, and though this isn't necessarily specifically directly hot-related, it's still something that we do. But on Saturdays, they've expanded Planetarium shows to be during the time that, that kids are out of school and families want to go find things to do. So they've started expanding into Saturday shows, and even today, we started working towards opening up more whenever kids are out of school. Well, BISD was out of school today, maybe people, other districts are out and they want to travel this way, you know, for a little day vac, vacation. And so they did two shows today in the Planetarium. So, and those, those are good, especially the ones during the day, we try to gear towards younger audiences.
Great, thank you.
Any other?
I took a, we took our boys, our sons, to their first theater experience to see Dracula.
Oh, fantastic. Excellent, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Wait, wait till this summer when they see Sound of Music. So that should be a lot of fun.
That's great. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much for your time today. I have to go to EMF rehearsal, so forgive me if I have to cut out.
That's fine, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Declaration of Conflict of Interest, and this is where council members have an opportunity to declare any conflict of interest on any item on the agenda for tonight. So if there's any kind of declaration of conflict that needs to be made. And hearing that, we'll move on to consent agenda. We have consent agenda, it's item one, is approved minutes from October three, two thousand and twenty-two. Item two is accept boards and commission minutes from planners and traffic. Item three, adopt ordinance number two-two-five-six that establishes regulations for food trucks and food truck courts, second reading. Item four, approve renew, renewing the contract for municipal prosecutor in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars as budgeted. Item five, approve purchase for replacement of four main consoles for, from Motorola Solutions in the amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars as budgeted. Item six, authorize down payment of nine hundred thousand dollars to Sidens, Martins. Martin Ford Fire Department Ladder Truck through HGAC Contract Number FS one-two-dash-one-nine. And finally, item seven, award contract to Gulf Fence for the PWE Complex and dugout fences replacement in the amount not to exceed a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars as budgeted. Is there any item on the consent agenda that council would like to remove for further discussion? Not hearing any, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through seven as written.
All right, I have a motion. Second, I have a second by Councilman Baker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Move on to regular agenda. And Chief, feel free to, to leave, you've got a wife with kidney stones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He might rather be here.
Yeah, he might rather be here.
All right, we have, on regular item, regular agenda, we have item one is discussed and considered, full or partial closure of Weisach Street during construction from November one, two thousand and twenty-two to April, two thousand and twenty-three. And we have a spokesperson? Is there anything you want to use in on this, Megan, or just?
So I believe you'll speak about it, I know Adam couldn't be with us tonight, but the developer is requesting that they close the street just during construction. I believe he'll speak on the matter, but it's mostly concerning safety, also just efficiency for them, they would be able to move quicker if this was allowed. We have spoken with the developer, and there's the option of only allowing a partial closing of the street, so maybe allowing them to do half instead of the full road, which would still allow access to vehicular traffic. But we also have spoken with BISD, they do have a school bus route that goes through this, the street, but they could reroute it, and that was something that Danny Massey was comfortable with, so that's kind of some background, and then I'll let him sort of explain.
Yeah, she covered it well, so my name's Barry, I'm with Bridge Tower Homes, I'm the Vice President of Construction. And yeah, strictly safety, so we're going to be building at an emphatic pace. We started beginning of September, we've already got sixty-one homes under construction, we're fixing to permit twelve more, and then, you know, we hope to get ninety percent of the community going by December. So as Joshua attests, the city inspector went by there, and there was like a hundred people, he had to cut through a wave of people to get to the superintendent. So just with contractors on site, framers, deliveries that are going, piping through there. We're managing it well, but we could manage it even better if we were to, to close off, as the diagram shows, just past Fern on Pecan Lane where our project starts, and then at Holly. To do, you know, again, I don't know if that's considered a partial or full, but we, we call that a full closure of that area. Again, just with the amount of deliveries, just with sixty homes, the road is lined long and deep. And so, you know, if that was granted, the other question is, are there any assistance with barriers that we could borrow? Or something like that, so that's, that's kind of where we stand, we feel it's in the best interest of the community and our workers, not having to dodge people cutting through as we're making, making those deliveries.
And when this request came up, we did do a traffic study, just to see a quick traffic count of how many vehicles use this road during an average day. It did find that we had about four hundred cars a day, however, this is during construction, and we don't know what is construction traffic and what is, you know, pulling forward, backing up, those types of things. It doesn't count which way they're going, how many times they go over it, you know, one vehicle, anything like that. That's just the number of times wheels go over during the count, so that was about four hundred, they did a ten-day study, and it was about four hundred cars a day. So, just for your.
So just for clarification, this, the closure would be twenty-four hours a day?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am, so there would be no hours?
Correct, through the duration of their construction.
Correct.
How about our EMS service? Get an ambulance by department and.
PD.
PD do there?
For our construction or strictly for areas around our construction?
Around and, and for our service also, can, can we pull that up on the?
Yeah, if I look at Fern, I mean, if you go out Fern, they've got clear access with the rest of Weisach. Oak Drive is, it runs parallel and connects to Holly, you know, I just don't, I don't see a big impediment of, hey, this shuts off.
And how many residences were we talking about that was going to affect, or did we say?
It's not necessarily, there are other access points to get to that area, but there, there's a few neighborhoods surrounding this construction site.
So can we kind of pinpoint and get a little closer?
You do have a map in front of you too, that they printed? Gives you an idea of where they're talking about.
But you said you've been under construction, heavily, heavy end construction since September something?
Beginning of September, correct.
Okay, so have we gotten any, have any of us gotten any calls from people in that area about not being able to get to their homes? I haven't. It's just, again, you know, when this was first brought to us, Ramadesso was talking to me about this, his first comment was, is that this is probably going to be a first for us, because we've never really closed down for any kind of development in the past. And, but it doesn't mean that this isn't a unique situation where, where it would make sense to do that. But again, I think every, every one of us up here would be concerned, our main concern is, is that if there would be, you know, issues for the other residents with the closures, that's why I was asking the questions, if, you know, how long you've been doing it already, as far as the roads have been packed? And if we've had any calls on it, and I haven't received any calls on it to date.
No, and I don't believe we have, staff has not either, and you can tell, Councilman Baker, getting back to your question, there's access on That Way and Oak to every surrounding neighborhood, so no one would be ostracized with this, but they could have a potential delay.
This is, this is Weisach here?
Yes, sir.
And this is Holly.
And then to the right is Oak, to the left is That Way.
Okay, and this is going to be.
That's Pecan. Oh, it's Pecan, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So this is the construction area right here, and.
Yes, sir.
And this is apartment complex back over here on. And this is apartment complex back over here on, uh, this way street, so.
On that way, yes.
I mean, that way, so it won't affect that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's just Oak Drive and Pecan and Oak.
They need to pull up a little bit north. Where's, where's Fern?
Right there.
Okay.
Up on the, the top.
Your finger does not have a laser mechanism. Thank you.
There's Fern.
And again, we, we would want to.
Can't read my mind?
We would want to close this side of Weisach.
Okay, how about getting that head of Fern you're not talking about?
Yeah, no, sir. It would be right past Fern. That's where we would do the closure.
Okay.
But if I live on Fern and I'm on Oyster Creek Drive running through the, the main vein of the city and want to get to my house, now I'm going to have to go all the way down that way. Come back on Oak to try and get to my house, right?
Yes, sir.
We'll go down Oak, right here.
Yeah, Oak or that way.
It just inconveniences everybody that lives on those streets.
Yes.
On these two streets.
Yeah, Front Court and the other two.
Did we send out any flowers to the people in that residence?
No, sir.
If not.
I believe if we take a survey from both two neighborhoods and they don't have too big an objection, it'd be okay.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. If we, did we send anything, get a survey or send anything out to them or let them know anything about this?
We have not yet, but we, we definitely could.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is.
Before we voted on it.
So what I'm hearing is, is that what, uh?
Those two neighborhoods?
Yeah, so it's going to be.
The circle drives.
This neighborhood, so basically Fern Court this way and then over here, so those would be the ones we want to.
We can do that, for sure.
We want to send, uh, a survey to, to get their feedback before we go any further. That's our main concern, sir, is just impacting those.
Yeah, and are you proposing like shut off during the day and then y'all open it up and you shut down construction?
Just stay it off for five or six months, correct?
Correct, from, yeah, until April.
I, I think we have a lot of elderly, elderly members in our community in that area. We might look at it a little closer.
Have y'all done any? I don't know how you would do this because I'm not in your business, but it would seem to me that if, if, if you had, um, blocked off access here, that it might speed things up. So if, if the choice is between, you know, nine months and not blocking it off or six months and blocking it off, um, maybe, uh, if, maybe the residents might like to, you know what I'm saying? It, it would seem to me like it would speed it up, but I don't know.
It sounds good, but they're still going to be at the mercy of concrete. And that's going to be their biggest, that's going to be their biggest holdup.
Yeah, and so far it's not, but yeah, absolutely. It could, you know, I think it's going to free up even more later this year and beginning of next year, but, um, yeah, that could be. And I know I'd hate to, I don't want to promise that, hey, we say April and they can reel it in, but again, our, our main focus is safety. There's so many large equipment and trucks coming through there. Um, that's, that's really what we want to focus on.
And that's the thing we can do is when we communicate and ask for input from those neighborhoods is just explain to them why we're doing it and the main reason is for safety.
Yep.
Uh, especially if we have, like, uh, Councilman Baker saying, we have a lot of, we have a lot of elderly people in that area and last thing we want to do is put them in a construction site to try and drive through there, so.
Absolutely.
And I believe we do have plenty of time to get that sent out to them and get feedback before the next council meeting, so we could do that.
Thank you.
Alright, if it's okay, we'll move on to item, uh, two. Item two is discuss and consider requests for, uh, Lakewood Manor to construct a entry sign at the entrance of Weisach Street. And, um.
Take it away, Barry. Tell them why you need it.
So we, the ordinance was, did grant us, I think, a sixty-four square foot sign, um, near.
On the building.
Um, that we're going to utilize, um, at the model home or the leasing, um, home, which is going to be on the right side of, of Weisach. Um, that's going to be three oh, uh, eight Weisach. So we're going to utilize, utilize that sign for leasing information, put it by the leasing home, but, um, but we, we would love to, um, you know, put a, a monument on the, and y'all have the drawings they sent over? Okay, you know, on the, if you're in, you know, at Holly looking Weisach towards the neighborhood on that left side. Um, uh, and again, I hope my information is true. Eddie, Eddie at the city gave me some background on the neighborhood. Um, uh, and again, if it's not, if it's not true, it's his fault. Uh, but basically Lakewood Manor, um, I was told was, is the first, uh, kind of permanent structure community before Lake Jackson was a city. Um, I was told they did a tent city, um, and then, um, Lakewood Manor, they started building duplexes so Dow could house, um, the people who worked there and have places, um, for that. And, um, so that history's rich. Um, I've gotten a lot of good feedback of people driving through, hey, what are y'all doing? We're rebuilding homes here and we're going to lease them. And people were excited. In fact, um, I had a gentleman by the name, um, of, where is it? Uh, James Malone stopped me a few days ago and, and asked, hey, what are y'all doing? Um, I explained it. He's like, I used to live there, you know, and, and we had a good, good times. He said the neighborhood did go through some tough times. He said, but I've got great memories, played football, swam the ditches when it, when it flooded. Um, and, uh, you know, as I explained, what time, what type of homes and community, and actually showed him a little rendition. Um, he was just ecstatic that we were going to rebuild that. And so it'd be neat to have, um, that monument there with the Lakewood Manor name, um, to kind of pop and really show the, you know, hey, we revitalized, revitalized it and brought it back up. Um, and, and, and we want our name on that too, you know? On the sign as it shows, it would say Lakewood Manor Bridge Tower Wellness Community. Um, and, uh, you know, that, that's something that we want to, you know, we want to be a part of and, and make known. So that's, that's kind of what our thinking is on that.
Are y'all stuck on the design?
Uh, no, we, we would, we would, you know, fifteen foot is kind of the smallest, would be one of the smaller ones we've ever done.
I'm not talking about going bigger. I'm just talking about the, the artistic view of it.
Yeah.
Since, since, since there is a lot of history there, it would be, if you were, if we'd go forward with it, it'd be nice if it was a little bit more. This looks very industrial and it looked like it'd be, if you go something mid-century style, uh, to tie back to the city.
Absolutely. And we've done some, I mean, yeah, we've done some really, we're now, we are trying to manage costs as well.
I understand.
But we've, we've done some really neat stuff in some of the cities we've done. So we're not opposed. Um, in fact, if that helps us, uh, get it passed, absolutely. Let's put our heads together and create something even more, um, aesthetically pleasing.
And we have precedents, you know, we have some areas that have signs, you know, they are maybe not freestanding, but they are like Oak Forest, uh, Forest Oak, uh, and, uh, you know, back, uh, of a three thirty-two, you know, those neighborhoods. So we have done that before. So, you know, if you're willing to match what you described, the nostalgia of what that used to be there, if you could do something like that, I'm sure council will be more open to.
We would definitely be open to.
Yeah, and the, and the other thing is that the reason why you don't see a lot of these, uh, neighborhoods, subdivisions or whatever named is because we pride ourselves on being a community instead of a group of subdivisions. So, but again, I think it's, I think there's value of, like I said, if, if, if you could change, change the style towards less industrial style, that'd, that'd make it more appealing to me. And then, uh, at the end of the day though, is, is, I know as Modesto has explained to you guys, is that, uh, we'll have to open up the pod and that's going to take at least two meetings to do that.
Got it.
Uh, to go through that, uh, to allow for this. And that's just the way the pod's set up, the lot, the.
And you're talking about no neon sign or no lighting or anything like that?
Are you saying we can't or we will, or are we?
Yeah, you wouldn't. This would be just plain no sign.
No Vegas style.
Since we're opening up the pod, you all can set whatever you want. And I mean, not horrible, but, but you're in control.
No flashing for me.
If you're okay with that sign.
No Vegas style.
No lights, you know?
Anyway, we'll go into that. If we, if council agrees to, to, to go further with this and open up the pod, then we can have those discussions.
Yeah, we'd be, it'd be worth the wait for us, we think.
It's, you know, it'll be, be a little bit of wait.
Got it.
Well, not only wait, you know, when you open up the pod, anything is possible. It's, it's not just going to happen.
Lights are possible?
Now, now what he's saying is that, if when you open the pod back up, if there's something that we wanted to change, that we haven't changed because the pod was already in place, is we could come back and say, well, while we're at this, let's change this. So that's one of the challenges that you have as developers by opening a pod back up. Not saying that there's a, a list of things that I know of that we would want to change, but.
Are there a few that you know of?
I don't know of any.
I don't, I don't know.
Open the can and find out.
You take the chance. That's all I'm trying to say.
I'm new, so there's no telling. But, uh, you know, a lot of things that we had issue with, y'all have already addressed, uh, with laying out of the, the homes, you know, I had to go through that. That was painful, I know. And then, um, there was some discussion about the dumpsters and stuff. And so I think those have been resolved and parking. So just, again, there is a risk that we'll bring up some of those things back up again, but, um, that's, that's where we're at. So do I hear consensus from the group, uh, council to, to move forward with this and open the pod up and have discussion on signage?
Yep.
When we have that discussion, it would be nice at that point to see a, a different design.
Right.
That we kind of have an idea.
With anything you could help to us land this, so it doesn't waste your time and our time, that would be great.
Okay.
I think staff understands.
Staff knows what that's my ideas and stuff.
Perfect, absolutely.
Like our entry sign.
Yeah.
Down to H eight. Going down to eighty-eight, the entry sign.
That one.
Yeah, that or the.
The team that just redid the Al Doudal.
Right.
Design, they have to have people who do that.
Anyway, staff can help you with that, get you connected with that. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright, move on. Alright, we're going to move to item three, discuss and consider, uh, the requirements that will be placed on residents who keep rabbits within the city limits. Uh, this is Sherry. And before we get started, I just, uh, want to share some information that, uh, I went out and I talked to my, uh, vet about rabbits and to just get some, to validate some information, uh, on those, because I know there's some people that have concerns. And just, uh, basically, uh, I wasn't aware, but there are fifty-eight recognized breeds of rabbits, uh, that are recognized by the American Association of Rabbit Breeds. Uh, adult weights change can be from, uh, two pounds to sixty pounds, depending on the breed. A female, uh, can start reproducing at the age of twelve months for up to six years. And out of every sixteen days, out of every sixteen day period, a female rabbit can become pregnant if she's around a male. Um, gestation period is twenty-five to thirty days. So needless to say, rabbits can produce a lot of offspring. Also, if you do a search on feral domestic rabbits on the internet, you'll find out a few cities are struggling with rabbits moving away from nice and cuddly little animals to a problem for them. And that is, we talk about feral cats all the time, that rabbits, domestic feral rabbits can be an issue for some cities. Another challenge associated with that is, is that a domestic feral rabbit can't be captured by ACO and released to another area of like a, 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 a natural, uh, a rabbit, not, not like a, um, non-domestic rabbit, a wild rabbit. Uh, they have to go to a animal shelter or what one of these cities are running into now is animal shelters won't take them because they don't have room. And so the city is forced to euthanize the feral rabbits. So just a few things to just, uh, make you aware of concerning rabbits, why some people don't feel like we should have rabbits in the city of Lake Jackson. Since that question's been asked several times. Alright, so Sherry, you want to tell us what you set up for us?
Alright, so I went through some cities that allow rabbits and I pulled out, um, and tried to organize on this sheet by subject, um, different, uh, regulations that they have. What I want to remind you is that we already have in our animal ordinance requirement for sanitation. And you're not allowed to have loose animals. I don't know if people are going to microchip their rabbits so we know where they're, who they belong to.
I'm having a hard time understanding you.
Okay, so, uh, anyway, that's what, I just want you to know, we've got sanitation and nuisance already. Um, we're already not allowed, they wouldn't be able to breed and sell them. That's what's in the ordinance. Uh, uh, but according to the mayor, they just have to get close to a male.
Right.
And they get pregnant, so, um, that's, uh, we don't have distance, uh, requirements for dogs or cats, like the dog kennels and cages and stuff. There are no, no requirements like that at all for, for other animals, other birds and snakes and things. So I guess my point is there's a lot to choose from here, but, don't try to fix a problem we don't have yet.
Right.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's what you're trying to say.
Problem we don't have yet, but certainly some regulations to start out would be great.
Good. And so that's.
And so the first thing is, if you just want to let people run wild with rabbits, all we have to do is take out those two words from the definition of livestock and we're done. However, if you want them to get permits, then there's more basic, you know, in the permits are limiting them, no breeding, no slaughtering, not for business purposes, which I said there's already a zoning code, but it doesn't hurt to put it back in the ordinance. And if you want a permit, you know, when you go in, you need a sketch to show what you're going to do and what you're going to have. Um, and then if it's, if you only want FFA or 4H to have them, they would have to have proof of membership that they're actually participating that year. Come in every year to get your permit. Um, and then they'd have to get rid of the rabbits once they graduated or stop being in that organization. And then reasons to revoke the permit, um, three days notice and they're not cleaning up the mess. Um, somehow they lied on the permit and we found out. And then I've got question marks on how many times the rabbits are at large or how many times, uh, humane has had to go out there for sanitation and cruelty. Um, and we could due process, we could have the permit revocation, revocation in front of the judge. Or humane could revoke it and you could appeal to the judge. That's the way, uh, the dangerous dog state law is. And then hutchers, if you guys wanted to give it to hutchers, but it looks like you definitely want to have them, you know, separate hutchers on opposite sides of the yard.
Yeah, opposite side, yeah. Just, uh, another FYI, uh, there are no required vaccinations for rabbits. Uh, they are not known carriers for rabby, rabies, uh, and so forth. Uh, so that's one of the things I checked on was if there's a required vaccination. Uh, they do recommend, uh, for various reasons, spay and neuter. So they being other cities and vets.
Was there an exception for that for the 4H?
Right.
FFA, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so whatever y'all want, just let me know.
Where to start?
Can I ask a question?
Uh, sure. You need to come up to the front, please, and name and address, please.
My name is Sue Williams. I live at one-twenty-five Mesquite, Lake Jackson. How are rabbits defined as livestock? I've never heard of that.
They were just added in, I think in the seventies, we have a definition of livestock in the animal ordinance and they added rabbits in the city's definition. When city council decided they didn't want any more rabbits.
But it's in, in the state law, they are not.
No, in state law it isn't, but in the city ordinance it is.
Okay, that, that was confusing me.
Good.
What does the state law, if you have it handy, what does it define livestock as?
Not rabbits.
You know.
Does it, does it, yeah, please, if you, if you would, please, if you got it handy. Surely pigs, horses and cows, but I mean, how far down does it go?
No, it says cattle, horses, mules, hogs, sheep and goats.
Okay.
That's what it's defined as.
It's usually tied to something that has secondary cell or secondary use.
Yeah.
And I think the only reason why rabbits may have been put into that group is because they can be raised for meat, which we have had in the city before and we've had to stop.
That's why I put no slaughtering as one of the choices.
Okay, so to start at the beginning, I guess, with this?
Sure.
Uh, permitted or, or no permit? I don't think anybody up here is going to really agree to just take and rabbits off the current ordinance. Leave it blank.
That's probably a good assumption, but.
So.
I agree with that.
So permits. Uh, number of rabbits? I mean, we had that conversation with, uh, Kilsbees when they were here and then.
Right, they had, they had twenty-two or twenty-five animals and stuff, but their focus was a little bit different than general 4Hs and FFAs or.
And let me ask this question to the lawyer. Um, their zoning already permits in a relatively unrestricted manner, as, as I understand, the keeping of these rabbits. And so if we were to say six rabbits here, would their exception allow them still to keep what they keep or how does that work?
So it says, all that it says is they're allowed to have them and they're not supposed to become a nuisance. That's, that's what it says. So if you put, if you wanted to limit it here, I would want to clarify whether E one is included in that limitation or not.
Okay, so there's a way to, because the E one, again, is the multi-acre, not, not normal Lake Jackson type stuff, so more rabbits makes more sense. Non, not normal Lake Jackson type stuff, so more rabbits makes more sense there than it does.
There are too many large left in Lake Jackson that are E one.
Okay, but there's, there's no requirement that one trump the other, we can carve that zone out from these, okay, just making sure.
So this wouldn't affect them, is basically what you're saying?
Right, we can build it that way.
Can you talk about uh, you know, if the desire is to uh allow rabbits for FFA or 4H and stuff, uh the standard animals are shown, from what I recall, is, is either or, show one or a hutch, and one being one, and then, or a hutch being three.
Three.
Uh type stuff, so if you, your focus is in that direction, then that would be, give you some guidance on at least where you would start.
You know, and you know, maybe you should start there, do you want everyone to, kids have rabbits, or just the kids? And I personally am okay with doing a permit, but I don't wanna limit it to the FFA or FHA.
4H, yeah.
So what is, does everyone else agree with that, or will just go on talking about everything?
Well, that'd be a good start, yeah.
I think that's, maybe I should have put that at the top, that's a good, good start.
Comments? Well, I'll break the ice, I, I don't have a problem uh with going forward for, with 4H or uh FFA. Even though people felt that I made different comments other than that, that's not what my comment was. My comment was, after education and BISD is, is that you don't have to have rabbits to have to be on in FFA. You can do other things, or there's other options for you, but you can be in FFA, and uh I think it's a great program, as I explained that time too, so. But if we're gonna do, if we wanna support FFA and uh do rabbits, that this is a cleaner way to do it than what we've done in the past. So that's where I'm at. Any other comments?
So a lot of children currently in Lake Jackson do have rabbits as pets, and they keep them inside their homes uh as a pet. And uh if we put that FA, you know, 4H in FFA ruling, we would be asking them to give up their rabbits.
Well, they're already owning, owning them against the ordinance, I don't know if everyone's gonna come forward and sacrifice them all. Right, but I, I mean, what he's saying is, is that, and the same thing I'm saying, is that I won't limit just, I mean, if JB wants a, a rabbit in his house, he can have a rabbit in his house. You know, or if my kids want two rabbits, they can have two rabbits, you know, but without necessarily being involved in FFA or FFH. So that's two for just anyone represented? But permitted. But permitted, and the mayor wants just the kids?
Well, I, I just wanna make sure, what I'm trying to say is, FFA requirement is a great, great to start, but I just don't want people who currently have a, a child that has a rabbit in the home to have to give that up. Because it's, it's traumatic for the kid.
It's, it's, it's hap, it happened, I don't know if they belong to children, but we've had twice, people have come in since I've been here, asking, because they got caught with rabbits, and council made them give them up. Other ones, humane might just tell them they have to go, and they give them up, so, but it's only on a complaint basis.
Right.
And it won't be a house-to-house search.
No, but it's a previous understanding is that previously, when somebody called the city hall and said, hey, is it okay to have a rabbit? They were told, yeah, I, I guess so, as long as, you know, they uh in, in your house, it's okay, I mean, the worst thing's gonna happen.
Well, that, that should not have ever happened, because what staff should be doing is stating what the ordinance is, not their preference.
I understand that, but it's.
Because I would have asked Alice, or Sally, or Bill, or Desto, or me, and we would have all said, you know. Okay, so let's.
Yeah, let, yeah, if we're gonna change the ordinance, and everybody's gonna follow this new set of guidelines that we're trying to put in place, then I agree, it needs to be open to everybody, not just the FFA kids.
So what if we did it, to where we allowed it open to everybody, permit it, leave it to three, as a number? That's what you were calling a hutch?
Right.
Okay, so we'll leave it to three, and that way we don't have to worry about the FSIs needing more than three.
But I'm, just wanna clarify, it's not what I'm saying, I'm not agreeing to, with my part, I'm, what I'm saying is, I wanted to grandfather.
No, we're not grandfathering.
That's really important.
There's hard to grandfather anybody, so this is, would be, you're just adding complexity uh to something that doesn't need to be this complex.
Yeah, it's, you can't tell who already have the rabbits, and who didn't. And why would they ever tell us?
Right.
They would, they'd just get caught by them.
Good.
You gotta keep on the good side of things.
But trust me, I, I know of some folks who were told by some folks at city hall, it's okay.
I don't doubt it, it just shouldn't have happened.
But it happened, though, and what I'm trying to say is.
Right, but we're trying, we're trying to clarify that, though, so that, that we're not doing that in the future.
Right, and just wanna clarify that if those people who were told that, it's unfair for them to tell them that they don't have to get rid of the rabbit.
Well.
But if we get this passed, then they should, they have no worries, I mean, they just have a rabbit, as long as they don't have eighty-five of them.
We, yeah, I won't go down that rabbit trail, but uh.
Okay, so.
Well, let's move on, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, so.
We've, we've had staff, we've had staff that have led people in the past, and we've had to go back as a council, do the hard work of fixing it. So that's, but I'm, I'm not even suggesting that we go down that road, but that it, it's, it hasn't been the first time that uh we've had staff give misinformation.
Okay, so where we're at right now, my understanding is, open to everyone, with a permit, limit of three, everything else on here stands, no breeding, no slaughtering on premise, not for business purposes.
Yep, spayed and neutered. Everything under the basics, I think, is, is good, you're not gonna, you're not gonna ask people to spay and neuter their dogs or cats, so why would you do that to?
But we do.
Not to all of them?
And they have, they're supposed to.
Well, we're, it's, we're just asking.
So we don't. So we don't.
No, ma'am.
No, uh-uh, they're not required.
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, then why would we do that?
Whenever they retrieve a dog, it has, a, a pet, it has to be spayed, neutered, I think.
I think that's the shelter.
SPCA.
Shelter doesn't.
That's the shelter.
But not city ordinance?
No, but it's, it's good, so um alright, you guys.
We have comments from the ordinance.
Settle on spay and neuter.
Yeah. Yes, give your hand up, please. Name again.
Wonder if we completely oppose the rabbits totally, what can we do if y'all decide to do this? What can be done?
You can have a, try to get a referendum on the next ballot to withdraw the ordinance.
Okay, and, cause I'd like to know that before I leave tonight, if this ordinance passes, cause I will be here.
This is just a draft, it's gonna take two more meetings after this one.
It doesn't matter.
Sally, has all the information on how to do a referendum.
If it even. Slightly. Not a problem, thank you.
Okay. So, did we decide spaying and, I'm just.
We have one more comment. Yes, sir.
Uh is this for a general rabbit requirement, anything about rabbits?
This is about, this is for item uh three.
Thank you, I'm, I'm Justin Pulliam, I'm uh at eighty-nine nineteen Joponica Drive in Rosenberg, a mayor and council, uh I've reviewed this rabbit issue again, in accompanying uh falling after the chicken issue. And I really think that the city staff is playing a game, um we're talking five meetings to get something so simple about whether rabbits? We're not talking about cats and dogs, which are much more of a disturbance to neighbors and members of the public than a rabbit. Five meetings, this should have already been up with a drafted copy last meeting, and again, this is another game, and what did I see on the agenda? It read is, can y'all put the language up, please, it was something like, we're gonna not discuss whether we're gonna just allow rabbits, it's, we're gonna discuss the restrictions. Like the city attorney's making it mandatory that there must be restrictions on rabbits, that.
I'm following council's direction, you asked me to come up with this list so they could discuss it tonight.
So, two meetings ago, though, it was, we're gonna have it on the agenda, and last week was just another, let's talk and get everyone upset for, I guess, an hour, hour and a half, because it got nowhere. And so, mayor and council, I said this last time, I'll say it again, rabbits, if we can't decide on an easy, positive activity, activity for the youth to engage in? Like, it's bad outside, but we can't tell them, hey, join the FFA or 4H and go do a rabbit, because that's illegal in Lake Jackson, Texas. How hard is it to just say you can have your bunny rabbit and do something productive in Lake Jackson? Not everyone has the amount of money it takes to move to, out in the county, like I had to, to get out of y'all's nanny, oppressive, authoritarian, little idealistic city of enchantment. Take everyone's money to put into the downtown, just for our preferred few, uh not even all the businesses, because the awnings we tore down, forget that. This facade is gonna get torn down, if y'all cannot just pass the bunnies, no restrictions. If people complain, revisit it next year, whenever they complain, there's not gonna be complaints about rabbits. I feel like I'm gonna have about two or three years of no sleep, because y'all just don't get it, we're not gonna live in tyranny here, thank you, mayor and council.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sheri Hunter, I'm at one seventeen Mesquite, you're, you're here all the time.
Uh, you have to address us, you can't.
He's here all the time, number one, he lives in Rosenberg, he doesn't live in Lake Jackson, so I don't know why he comes up here and complains and certainly raps at everybody, when he has no concern in Lake Jackson. You want a bunny, go get it in Rosenberg, don't bring it to our city, quit causing chaos in our city, go to your own, you fool.
Alright, okay, again, when uh you come to the podium, you need to address council, okay, please. Alright, so we're moving forward with uh what would be defined as a possible ordinance, or things that we add into ordinance. And we still have the option, as council, of, of going forward with it or not, so that's, that's still where we're at. So, do you wanna carry on, since you're helping us through this?
Okay, so back where we were, everyone, permit, limit the number, I don't understand the point of spay and neuter, because I think if you do different hutches for each sex, and you've already said no breeding, then I think that's an additional expense, and it's just redundant at that point.
Well, yeah, I don't think we put it on the list, so.
Put that on the list, well, that was where we, that was where we headed.
That's where we're at, but it's, it's not on the list, we scratched.
Okay, so um pins, distances, so on here, where we're talking about hutch requirements from houses, commercial buildings, any number that we choose is pretty arbitrary, whether it's ten foot, twenty foot, fifty foot. Because, again, my neighbor had rabbits literally on my house, and I didn't know anything about it till they told me about it. So any number you choose there is gonna be arbitrary, um particularly if you put the responsibility on the homeowner for smell, which we already have all of that nuisance um in place. FFA, FF, 4H, um proof of membership, ends upon graduation or unenrollment, I think that that, if you already have limits set, then really you can't say it ends upon graduation. No, that was just if, y'all just wanna give it to FFA. If, if or, right, I'm just kinda going down your list here.
The other thing is that some.
You just give the permit.
Yeah, it's some, some things, if, if you do it a permit, and if there's a fee associated with it, is that some cities, if it was an FFA or 4H, was that they did, did not require the uh fee, permitting fee. So that's what would change. Just to, for clarification.
So I mean, again, I do kind of agree that we're overcomplicating this.
Yeah, and you could make it, we do have our assistant chief here, you could make it so that humane doesn't even need to inspect it, realistically, the inspect, the permit fee would be to cover that inspection.
Right.
So that is something you could eliminate, he could probably speak to that at the time, that it would require the officers, if that's something you're interested in.
I don't, yeah, I don't see that there's a need for permitting, because I don't see a need that we would do inspections, because you're putting the requirements in here. So that if there is a problem with them, we would come out to do this, to see if there's an issue.
Yeah, maybe just say that, just say, okay, anybody can have three rabbits. Okay, so no permit, you can have three rabbits, and um. If it becomes. And no breeding and everything. And if it becomes a nuisance, then you deal with that on a per case basis.
Yeah, super simple, the nuisance. No permit, you can have your rabbits, don't breed them, don't slaughter them, can't have a business with them, you don't have to pay a permit fee.
And avoid a nuisance claim.
Yeah, keep it clean, take care of them, I mean, that's, let's make it really simple.
Okay, so we'll just go with the basics, and not worry about the rest, and if something comes up later, we, we can go to the permit, I love that. Yeah, and three here, but carve out for E one, so they can have.
Right.
How would that compare to Angleton, I know you don't have it memorized, but I've, I've heard Angleton's ordinance touted as a, a great model by people on this committee and people in there.
They have six, you can have up to six, now, their ordinance, and I've got it right here, theirs includes chickens, rabbits and ducks, so you can have any combination.
Two of each kind.
You can have two of each, five of one, one of another, so that's how theirs is.
Do they make permits and all that?
Yeah, theirs is permitted, they do a twenty-five or thirty-five dollar annual permit, has to be done by June, I just think it's very complicated for what we're trying to do. But um, and again, FFA and F four H has kind of a separate set of rules.
Sounds like something we can uh move forward with, uh and we can have, yes, sir. Yeah, I got you.
Alright, um so you've heard the term breeds like rabbits?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that, that's a major concern, okay, FFA and 4H is about breeding. I mean, if you're gonna tell them they can't breed, they can't participate, so um, those are conflicting situations. Back to uh, I have, I have this gut feeling that there's a coordinated approach here between Congressman Seth and Blanchard to get chickens into the city of Lake Jackson. There's a lot of things I studied in some videos and previous meetings, key words and words count, words matter, um seem to point in that direction. This is gonna become a backdoor approach to getting chickens and ducks, just like Angleton, I know it is, it will happen, Seth told me so.
I think the chicken people will be back, I, I do think so.
Well, yeah, when you call them.
Well.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I didn't call them initially.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, so.
But I do support their efforts.
You know, I, I fully understand you do, I've got that, but I'm warning you, each and every one of you, this is just a backdoor approach to getting chickens and ducks as well, who knows where it will go? Let me see, I can, I give you, if you all wanna review the evidence that I'm referring to, we can take a look at the video over here, if you wanna pull up the YouTube video from September seventh, September sixth. No? No?
No, this is.
Well, then I'll read, I'll read my notes on that, okay, alright, so uh after much discussion, four and again, it's Blanchard fumbled a motion that would essentially allow chickens and rabbits in city limits if approved. It shows up on the YouTube at about the one hour and thirty-five minute and one hour and forty-one minute, the exact wording was as follows, Blanchard, I will make a motion that council adopts or changes the current ordinance that we have, which will include all the limits that we talked about before. All that is going to have to be written into there, we're going to have to have two meetings to dis, to discuss it all, and that. But I'll ma, I'll make the motion that we do adopt an ordinance to allow for chickens and rabbits. And quickly, uh Sheri said, oh, mayor says, can't talk chickens, just rabbits. Blanchard followed up with, to allow, okay, and had a big sigh, like he got caught. Rabbits, in disgust, it changed from the last time I saw it, he looks down at his paper and says, that's fine. Now that sus, that's very suspicious to me, very suspicious.
I don't think there's anything suspicious about it, I, I mean, I'll be very.
You can think what you want, that's what I think.
I will be very clear and direct with you, if the chickens come back, absolutely, they will be supported, and the reason that he said that, my guess is, I'm not speaking for him, is because when we look, we keep referencing the Angleton ordinance, it does cover chickens, rabbits and ducks.
Yeah.
So, that's.
Before he could actually finish his last word, you seconded it, that's a coordinated effort. Ma, mayor says, I'll take the motion if you are through discussion, the mayor tries to summarize the word salad, but failed, he asked, and asked for Blanchard to uh re, restate it. And he giggles and laughs and says, it was pretty messed up, huh, I fumbled through that, we're either gonna amend, create a new ordinance to allow these animals, quote, these animals, we're talking about rabbits, not. These animals. We're talking about rabbits, not animals. These animals, like multiple types of animals. With the spec- uh, stipulation that council agrees upon, and that's gonna take some discussion. Mayor says, alright, a motion second. Is there any further discussion for council? JB says, I just want to clarify this motion is, is to, yeah, uh, but how can we have a motion if we don't know the animals and how many? Sherri says, uh, this is just a motion to let's do this thing and then we'll have to have. And you said hammer out the details. Sherri says, continues, then we'll have a session and y'all gonna have to come up with all the details and then they'll draft an ordinance. And Seth says, this is just a quick, continue the discussion to come up with something. And JB says, well, why can't we discuss it first and then come back with a motion? Then we'll have all the solid evidence in the ground. And Seth says, the motion is to continue the discussion to come up with some ordinance, other- otherwise it dies. Blanchard says, yeah, just start drafting an ordinance. Like hurry up, let's get it done or change the one we have. And the mayor says, basically this ordinance is saying that if you approve this, you approve this, that you, you approve going forward. For finding a method to allow rabbits for projects. You can't say FFA or whatever. It has to be for an organi- it, it. It has to be for an org- any organization. You can just say, you can't, you can't say just say FFA or four H. Sangania, uh, what are the limits? You wanted to know what the limits were. How many rabbits and whatnot. JB says, that's what I was asking. These are no limits. That would be the next meeting. Mayor, if we approve this, then we have to hash out the pieces. Then the pieces would come back and we can still say, I don't agree with the pieces and it could still die. Sherri says, so the next meeting is September, y'all would start hashing things out. And the mayor says, so all this is just all, all the motion is, do you want to take this further? Or do you want to discuss, you end the discussion here in saying we are not going to make a change in the ordinance? And JB says, okay. Mayor comes back, says, alright, um, alright, so the motion is seconded, so call for a vote. Well, in favor of the motion, the table say aye. Seth Blanchard and Sangania says aye. Mayor, all those opposed, vote no. Judge votes, uh, the mayor votes no. Broadus, no. JD says, what, JD was holding back, so the mayor asks, JD, JB, uh, what did you vote? JB says, uh, we can look into it. Seth, uh, mayor says, so is that a yes? Baker says, yes, I would rather us look into it first and then voted on it. But I would like to look into it to see what both the numbers and the stuff are and we'll talk about it. Mayor says, I need a vote. It's either yes or no. And JB says, yes, I will look into it. That wasn't a pure yes. That was, that was conditional, okay? So the mayor says, alright, and we have to move forward and look to hashing out the details. Um, it's riddled with problems, guys. You know, you're, it, it is taking a long time for you to figure out what you wanna do. Which means you're not sure. And I can tell you right now, you, you'll probably be sorry at some particular point in time if you let this go through. Thank you.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I was, there's not me hiding anything. I'm one of the most vocal people up here. Um, I support the chickens, I support the rabbits, I support all of that. Anything that is the majority is going to win. That's, that's how our society is set up in a representative government. That's how we have to do it.
Majority, the majority of the people, not just the council.
No, the majority of people, a hundred percent.
Yeah, right.
We're only here to represent the people and I will always support limited government, uh, getting out of everybody's business.
That sounds a lot like your line.
That's the truth. There, there's nothing to hide at all.
Your rhinos.
Yeah. I would love to be able to have a, a normal conversation with you guys. And try and, and try and understand where you're coming from to, to maybe meet in the middle. But when I tried that last time, your wife cussed me outside like a dog. So it's hard to have a conversation like that. If there's, if there's absolutely no respect. So I hope you understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I do understand. The, the reason why this is taking long is, and a lot, a lot of things take a long time is because at the end of the day, we all sit up here. And we're all elected to at-large positions. We're not by districts or anything like that. So we're supposed to be making the best decision for the city at large. And so I've been, I've, I have voted no on this on several occasions. Because again, there are people in our community that do not want rabbits or chickens.
I agree.
And so I have to vote. And so there are, like I said, there are people that don't want it and there's. And I've been around for a long time and people may not realize it or not. But there's a lot of times whenever I have voted for or against items that I was either against or for. Because the best answer was, what was the best thing for the city? And I do that.
Yes. And tha- that I recognize from you and, uh.
So, and I, I don't think there's, I mean, I, in no way do I feel like there's any kind of. Uh, agenda other than that people sitting on council, they do have, they talk to the community. And they get the opinions from the community they talk to. So that's what they're here representing, just like all of us are.
So and to that point, um, I've stated several times, I personally don't want chickens or rabbits. I don't want those animals and responsibilities. However, when I was standing out at the polls, yeah, I was shocked. But that was the single most common question that I was asked. It wasn't how do you feel about taxes or how do you feel about this spending? How do you feel about chickens? That, I was asked that over and over and over again. So I am very respectful. And I've stated this to both you and your wife of your opinion. And I think that your opinion needs to be weighed in a decision. But there are a lot of people that feel the opposite way.
So you feel like you got elected by the chicken people and so therefore you.
No, I, I didn't say that. I just said that.
Something.
No, I didn't say that. Don't put words in my mouth. What I said was, I was surprised at how big of an issue, how big of a concern that was from citizens.
I don't believe that.
Well, that's your prerogative. It doesn't, it doesn't change.
I think this really needs to be taken to the people.
Mayor, can we call it off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to. What did you ask JB?
Call the question.
I think I'm just gonna bring an ordinance back because y'all are giving me a really good direction. Yes.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, there's nothing to vote on, right? I mean.
There's nothing to vote on. I think, I, I, I think we just beating it, beating this to death. And, and I would like to get back to, to more infrastructure, more potholes, or more roads. And taking care of the citizens and the leaks and, and, and stuff like this. Instead of beating this up about the chickens and the rabbits and, uh, I think we have. This might be important, but I think we got a lot more important things to do for the city. Instead of just beat this to death over and over and over and over.
And I don't disagree with you JB, but it's the citizens that keep bringing this back.
But I think we got a lot of potholes in the roads. We got a lot of leaking.
Right. So what we'll do is, uh, we've given Sherri some direction and she can draft something. And she'll bring it back and we'll discuss it, we'll tweak it. And that won't even be a first reading. That would be a tweak.
You don't want me to bring a first reading?
Well, the odds are is, we're go- well, okay, we can bring a first reading.
I, I felt like it's basic enough. I could do first reading.
Okay, alright.
Then if you don't like it, you do just tell me to go back and try some.
So did we. If you don't like it, you could, you could vote down that version and, and request amendments or whatever else.
And then we'll be right back where we started.
We'll be, have another first.
Well, we'll be right back where we started.
Another first reading. That's just, that's just how it works, right?
Yeah, it just seemed basic enough. I.
The only way you can, the only way you can end a discussion is if somebody put a motion out there. If you wanna end the discussion tonight, you end the discussion with a motion to not make any changes. And then if you get a second, you get a second and we'll discuss it and we'll vote on it. But right now is, is nobody has, nobody has come up and said, we wanna stop it. We want to be open enough to allow for some rabbits with restrictions in the city. That's where we're going right now. And just like we said before is, is that we could go down the road of two more meetings, two more meetings, we could go down the road.
I like to make a motion if we end this discussion that we can move on to more infrastructure, uh, getting back to doing the work of the city. I second that.
So wait, what, I'm, I'm unsure. You, you're talking about killing rabbit ordinances altogether?
Let's go down the agenda. Keep going.
No, what is your motion?
That we end the rabbit discussion, the chicken discussions and just get back to, to doing.
So your, your motion would be is, is to, your motion would be is not to allow, to continue, to not make any change to ordinance. Yes, something like.
Just end it all together and we just get back to our normal business that we was doing for, I was doing for the last ten or twelve years.
So you.
So you don't want Sherri to bring back an ordinance to the next meeting?
What he, yes, what he's wanting is, is that basically is to make a decision tonight of if we're gonna have rabbits or not.
Yeah, but he doesn't wanna give the orders again.
You can't do that. I mean, in the sense that if two weeks from now, somebody made a motion to go the other way and four people voted in favor of it, then it would just, we'd be right back on, right?
Yes.
There's no way to kill motions and ordinances on a particular topic forever, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, there's no way.
Yes, sir.
Justin Pulliam, eighty-nine nineteen, Japonica, Rosenberg, outside of the city limits in the county where you can have rabbits. So I mentioned this earlier and this is how, how government is supposed to work, is that we have constitutional rights. I, I keep, there, yes, y'all are. You know, a lot, through your votes, hopefully would somewhat mirror the majority of you will. But you also have to consider the right of the minority. We, we don't have mob rule. And, and I think this is a, a, a theory that some of the people on this board, not everyone, but a couple of them at least, understand. We don't have mob rule. The city must respect the rights of the minority. And in this instance, we're talking about people having something harmless. So if you're going to kill rabbits. I think in, along with that motion, you'd have to ban cats and dogs from your city. I think y'all are really looking into litigation for the first one that really wants a rabbit. Um, so it's not just this majority rule or the not in my backyard rule. It's you have to respect the rights of the minority. Now, I go to council meetings all across the state and I don't think I've ever seen business so dysfunctional. I think what's going on here, it's what I call the tail wagging the dog. Instead of the people via their elected officials determining the public policy, I'm sorry if I'm boring you, counselor. Instead of the people via their elected officials setting the policy, it's the administration, maybe the mayor too, that wants something a certain way. And the administration plays these games like two meetings ago, there's, hey, have the, 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 the ordinance ready for last meeting. That didn't happen. There was more discussion. Hey, let's have the things where we can have the red line and have an ordinance ready to go. Now y'all are talking about dragging this into a sixth meeting based, and this if it doesn't get killed. By the former police officer, or actually current police officer who's supposed to respect the constitutional rights of everyone. But again, not in my backyard. A few people say, not in my backyard. I don't think anyone's, if, correct me if I'm wrong, no one just came before this podium, before the council and said. Let me tell you about this rabbit horror story I had. It's all fear mongering. Just for what? To kill dreams? To kill hope? Just send everyone through the little indoctrination thing? Look, like, look around, around. It's not this. And I, and I get people who run for office, a lot of them have more money. They run in different social circles. And y'all talked about who came to vote. There's a lot of people in Lake Jackson who don't even have the time or, they don't even go vote. Y'all are more than just representing the voters. It's everyone. It's the voiceless. Those are the people I talk to every day. They're intimidated to come up before here. Yeah, I get y'all could take me out or take me, I, whatever. I'm not scared. I'm not scared to speak about our rights or about the rights of the voiceless. We're talking about harmless rabbits. Y'all are wanting to kill it. The administration is trying to ramrod their way that they don't want rabbits. I don't know why. But they're playing these games to never actually let an ordinance come before this body. I, I hope what y'all will decide to do, I think the night's still early. What you can do if this motion, I hope will die, will get killed. The next motion could be this, okay? Make a motion to lay it on the table. Someone, anyone can do this. I know they like the city attorney doing everything, but I think this is basic enough. You'll have the Angleton example, write up the draft ordinance. Bring it back before the closing of this meeting. So there can be a first read, so this can finally move on and maybe next time within four meetings, have a vote on this. If not, y'all be the reputation for the most dysfunctional governmental body that y'all cannot even determine. A most basic issue that really affects no one. But hey, not in my backyard. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. So do we still have a motion on the floor?
I think, I'd like.
Cause I need clarification. Cause JB started one and I need to clarify, we got it's a second, but I need clarification on what the motion is before we go forward.
And can somebody make a different motion?
You have to wait for this motion to be finished.
To finish, okay.
Have to wait for this and then you're gonna do.
A motion is. That we drop this and that we move on and that we get back to the business that we've been at hand. That we get back on the infrastructure, I get back and to business, uh, the bad streets, the, the leaking pipes. The, uh, the, the downtown work, uh. The construction that we need to take care of the, all the employees or the, the business at hand. Instead of, we keep going over and over with the chickens or the rabbits, uh, over and over and over.
So you're saying that this, this particular item does not come back?
Yes, it is important. It's important just like everything else. But I have been on council for more than ten years. And, and I think this has been, uh, the, one of the longest. Uh, incident where that we have had going over, I mean, I don't think we had to fight over downtown or the golf course, uh, the.
Okay.
The, the building of the new rec center.
I, I just wanna say, I just wanna say though, that to just shut this down is to ignore what your citizens have brought up to you. To just say it's not important. They've brought it up to you. And there's a lot of emotion and there's a lot of emotion both ways.
I'd like for us to move on and with the business. Well, we don't have a full house here. We don't have.
But this is the people's business and it has, I mean, it's the fourth meeting or third meeting or whatever it is.
I think it's the fourth meeting of the council, not the citizens.
But like if you go back to the chicken meeting, if you go back to the, the rabbit meeting, that's what people keep showing up for. Not the budget or the taxes or whatever, the, the actual important things. So it is important to the people.
And just to clarify, you voted for this two meetings ago and now you're.
No, I voted, I voted to, for us to do a study.
And now you're, now you're gonna make a motion to kill the whole thing?
I voted for us to do a study. Yes, I can do a study. I, I can do a study and then I can change my mind once I get to study.
Hundred percent.
So just to clarify my second here, so to, for me to continue on my second, I'm, I'm sure I understand it. My understanding was you wanted to end this for tonight. What we just spent earlier working on is still valid.
No, he wants to kill it all, be done with it.
But that's not my second on that then.
So he's pulling a second.
Yes, but I, my understanding was we move on. We already talked about this. I mean, we are already accomplished.
Can we go and take a vote?
Can.
Well, there's not, you don't have a second. So he's pulled, he's removing his second. So. Uh, so your motion just sits there. It's okay. So it's, you didn't get a second. So where we're at right now is that we've had a conversation and we've given the, the city attorney some direction to go write an ordinance. And we'll bring it back as a first reading. And council will have the opportunity with, if people wanna come and if they want to pick up the phone and call us, they wanna send us emails. And tell us what their thoughts are on it, then we'll have more information to be able to decide if we wanna go forward with it or not. The challenge that we have is just like with, what's a, a little bit frustrating is, is like, when you go back to the chicken situation. Was that came to council and council made a decision. The parties that didn't agree with that. are, 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 would still want to pursue that, and they can pursue it in different routes. But at some point, we have to decide, we are a community, and a decision's been made, and to move on. And we're struggling with that, we never have had that struggle in the past. We've had a council have, have made a decision and have moved on, win or lose, we've moved on, and we're not moving on, is what JB is saying.
And, and before we close out, and if, uh, any of the citizens would like to come up and talk to me more about it, and give me more information, I, I'm willing to listen to and be open about it, and we can go from there.
And same here.
And, I mean.
The, uh, the other thing is, is that, uh, it was suggested that we, we go off to the side right now and go write an ordinance and bring it back, we can't do that. It, and we don't do that.
But I hadn't had any citizens come to me and talk to me anything about, about the rabbits or the, or the chickens, so.
Okay, so, we will, we will bring it back first reading with this input from, uh, city manager. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, item four, is discuss, uh, concept of limiting, uh, limited charging.
So before we move on, so what, what are we standing now?
Where we at standing now is we've given Sherry some direction, and she will write up a draft ordinance. And then we will just, we will have the opportunity to review that draft ordinance and make a decision.
So we'll bring it back next meeting again?
And you can vote for it or vote against it. If you vote against, if you vote against it, it's down. It's down until somebody else wants to bring it back up again.
It's a motion for first reading?
Yes.
I mean, first, it's a first reading.
Yes.
Reason why I said draft is, well, never mind, because it's always listed as.
Yeah, we're, okay, I understand.
Okay, so it'll be a first reading of a ordinance with the, uh, items that we listed. All right, so discuss, uh, concept of limited charging parking sta, parking stations for electric vehicles in the downtown area. And this is something I kinda started when we started talking about, uh, actual construction downtown. I'd asked, uh, Megan if she would check with a few, few companies, uh, that do this kind of service, so she followed, she's been able to follow up on that, so.
Yeah, so, uh, mayor and council, we, staff has gotten approached by a few companies, I also reached out to a few, like the mayor said. Uh, we have a couple that are very interested in bringing electric charging stations. They're specifically interested right now in the downtown area because of its close proximity to HEB, as well as the local eateries and retail shops. Um, this is just us trying to understand if you are comfortable with this concept. Um, if you are comfortable with it, we would get into the more details. So the process would look like we would do, um, a request for proposals, it's a competitive bidding process. Uh, anyone, any companies would be open to it, so we would advertise for it, allow them to give us proposals, which would, uh, state where they want to put these, the location. It would state how much they're willing to pay for said location, if we did a lease or a permitting process. And then it would also, um, just talk about kind of like the details of that, you know, if other cars would be allowed to park there that weren't charging vehicles. Um, so that would get into the details at that time, so tonight, we don't necessarily need details, we would bring it back to you if you're comfortable with the concept, where you can review all of the proposals that we received, and see if there's any that you're comfortable with at that time, you know? We would tell them to try and limit their footprint on downtown, because it's really important that we don't take away public parking, especially for a private venture like this. Um, but that would be pretty much the only stipulation that we would put out there, is just for them.
Yeah, limited, limited footprint, uh, because we have one proposal that consumes, uh, two spots because of transformers, but there's different concepts out there, so.
Yes.
Uh, so we.
So this is just staff is trying to get an understanding, before we go through the request for proposals process, or reach out to more companies or anything, if it is something that you're comfortable with, and you want us to continue exploring and bring you back those proposals in a more formal setting, or if this is not something that you're interested in, and you think the downtown parking should be for regular parking instead of electric charging parking.
Another reason why I brought this up was just an example, this weekend, I was, there was a large group of, uh, a reunion group that was in the area, and they spent, uh, quite a few dollars downtown. And, uh, several, uh, several, I said I had four people, they came up and asked, where was the lo, closest charging station to downtown? And so I had to tell them the Marriott and a few other places that are, have car, charging stations, so. They were looking to, while they're spending money downtown to be able to charge your vehicle downtown.
So, since there would be option of leasing, this would not be doing it for free, so that should not conflict with that thing about
Correct.
Use the public, you know,
Yes, sir.
Public space, so if it was not a lease, they were giving it away free, then there would be a conflict with that, since, so that should work, yeah, that would be, you know. Sounds like a great idea.
So again, the idea is, like Megan says, we'll go out there and, and if y'all are okay with it, we'll get some information, and we'll come back, and again, we can look at it, so, uh.
You could reject all the proposals, once we have them, if, if you did not feel like any met your standards.
But, what was the understanding, the giving away free that, uh?
Parking space, you're gonna consume parking space, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna require them to lease the parking space.
They would be on city property, so that's what we.
They would be leasing for city property. Okay.
Do you have any sense, Megan, like, I, I suspect there are, there are vendors downtown who might really want this, and others who would not, do you have any? I, I, of course, they'll be able to provide their input if we choose to go forward and all that, I, have you just, do you know, have you talked to anybody during the reconstruction about it?
So unfortunately, my dealings with the downtown businesses have been slightly more negative when it comes to parking, because they want
More.
to optimize parking as much as possible, and so I do think most of them would be concerned about this, just because it, the way the ordinance would be set up, which is common in most cities, we would not, you could park there even if you don't have a charging vehicle, so it's not necessarily taking up any parking spaces from someone, but most people don't park in a spot that's reserved for someone else. Um, so I don't think most of them would be comfortable with it, but like the mayor said, we have looked at certain areas like South Parking Place, where the pavilion is, um, that the businesses, it's a little bit more open during the day, it's not as congested in there with traffic, it'd be really good for events that were held at the pavilion. So we have a few ideas of areas that would not impact certain businesses as much, um, that we would probably highlight for them, or just tell them to try and stay away from highly populated retail areas, but that would be up to them to.
Yeah, and I understand some retailers like it, because it takes upwards of forty, yeah, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, and you got a captive audience there for thirty, forty-five minutes, might as well spend it in their store, but.
The other option is, is we do have, and I sent a note to Megan and Modesto, is that we do have the, uh, parking lot, that the city parking lot we put downtown, and paid fifty thousand dollars for many years ago, that, uh, behind, uh, by CVS, behind Crawford's. Uh, I mean, not cross, uh, champagne. And so that's, that would be an area where we wouldn't be, would have less of an impact. It's not a great place to have it, but it's still downtown, and, uh, that is, that is city park.
So we do have some options. Yep.
And stuff, so, we've got some, so Megan will put that in the, the, uh, request, uh, of what areas might be open for this discussion.
Maybe some input also from our fire department?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we have, we did take into account what Councilman Blanchard said at the last meeting about, uh, the fire safety aspect, um, which we're dealing with coals, they're putting in some right now, so that's something that we could probably require of them.
We had good discussion with Will about
Yes.
and with the code enforcement about that.
Yes.
Just to make sure it's safe.
And I don't really know how these, and I was looking at, looking up information, and the thing is, is it's all so new.
That, that, yeah, even the.
There's not a ton of information about it, about how it works, like, are they gonna be metered, who gets that bill, you know, that sort of thing. Just, there just isn't a lot of information out there.
Sorry, y'all okay with moving forward with that?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, item five, again, was, uh, requested to be deferred to November seventh. And item six is discussing considering ordinance for limited right turn lane on Dixie Drive to Brazes, at Brazeswood Drive, first reading.
This is an ordinance of the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, amending chapter ninety-eight, traffic and vehicles to make the right lane at northbound Dixie Drive at Brazeswood Drive. A right turn only lane, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith shall be repealed to the extent of the conflict only, providing for a penalty, providing a savings clause, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced five days after publication.
Okay, and what did the time, did we put, what time periods?
We haven't, uh, established that time period yet, it would just be like it is on OCD, it would be about a half hour before, a half hour after the start-stop times.
So we need to put, do we need to put the time in the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I think if it were, or if you just said during school, something. Oh, wait, it's right here.
Six thirty to nine.
Six thirty to nine, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Do we just need it in the morning?
Yes.
Yes.
That's all that's been requested, is in the morning.
So is it, is, is it a possibility to suspend the second thing rule and pass it in the first?
There's not an emergency, and I don't have to fix what I wrote?
Yes.
No, I've just, most of it's, it's for traffic issues.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion, meaning we don't have a motion, but we have it, that, so I need a motion on, uh, the ordinance, and we'll go into discussion.
Just out of curiosity, why are we in the morning?
Well, that's whenever, it's a, it's a shorter period of time, it's, it's the most, because everybody's crushing to get there at a specific time, so that's why.
And it's a little bit more dispersed in the evening.
Right, because kids leave for different reasons at different times in the evening. So, if I could get a motion on the item, then we can discuss further.
So can we, we can move to approve this writing with the additional add-in, so, yeah, I would, I would move to approve, uh, this ordinance with the additional, um, six thirty to nine AM, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, now discussion.
So then when it comes back next, I'm, it'll be second.
Second for you, and I have the change that she's, that you're suggesting.
Correct.
Isn't that already there?
That's in the, the OCD one, we're just gonna add that same language down to the bottom.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the comments, by your audience, didn't have anybody sign up for this one, all right, so have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, it's approved, I mean, it's not approved, but motion has carried on the first reading with change.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Uh, we're gonna move on to, uh, item, uh, seven, discuss method to determine developers, deter developers from clearcutting property or from removing protected trees. And Sherry, you wanna talk about this a little bit?
Sure, okay, um, Councilman Mahalia asked that I look into this and bring, um, some information back. We had a developer, and the picture is somewhere in the packet, that, uh, clear cut, and he got one citation, and he just went and paid it with, you know, uh, the problem, he wants to make it more painful for people to do this, you can't, you cannot make the fee more than five hundred dollars, you can make it per tree. Instead of, he was, he was written a citation for clearcutting, that's one of them, but if you make it for removing trees, and certainly, we didn't know how many trees were removed, but we tested it pretty, pretty well going out there. So you can make it an offense per tree, and, uh, there, there are some cities that have civil fines attached, and they also stop work until the, the civil fines are, um, paid. And that, that is definitely the way to make developers stop and think about what they're doing, because time to them is everything. Um, so I didn't, it's just for y'all to discuss what you want, if you want to.
And we've ran into this multiple times now, correct?
Well, it started out with, yeah, it started out many years ago, whenever, uh, an area was clearcutted over a weekend, and so that's whenever the tree ordinance, that's what drove the tree ordinance being put in place. And so it's, it's been modified a few times maybe, but it's been pretty much there for quite some time. But it's the focus of the current ordinance is more for, uh, commercial versus residential.
Yes, it is the commercial only.
Well, you know, if you own, the property you own, you can take down a tree, I mean, your house, you can take down a tree. We try to get, keep the commercial to have landscaping, so it doesn't just look all concrete and signs. And then, um, so that residential, when the subdivision is being developed, is considered commercial at that point. We certainly wouldn't go into somebody who owns their house and tell them how many trees they have to have. Right, exactly.
Okay.
And, you know, planners support that type of, uh, uh, ordinance?
What type of ordinance?
Per acre, or per tree, or per, they said it would be harder to delineate each tree that was there on the property, but if you did a broad brush per acre or two acres, then, uh, then it'd be easier to.
Okay, that's, I didn't think of per acre, but, uh, yeah, so whatever y'all.
Most recent was the one, uh, Northwood, uh, section, I know that they were adding four foot of dirt, so it would, none of the trees would have survived. But regardless, they went and clear cut the whole area without any permits.
Yeah, there's always a, I mean, even if they're allowed to clear cut, there's, there's a process you go through, you have to have the plot, you have to give a permit. So we, so we know the area and what they're doing.
Well, the challenge, let's go back to Northwood, okay? So yes, they did do a clear cut, but what they did that was also a bigger violation was they did all that work without doing all the plot and all this stuff, which is required by ordinance. So why is there not, uh, some leverage there for us to say, you know, you didn't follow the prescribed requirements for your development? Instead of, you know, all we did was charge them five hundred dollars for clear cutting, but, uh, I mean, is there any kind of, uh, learning tool that we have available to us to, to stop that from happening?
We don't have one right now, but that's, I mean, if y'all want to discuss this, like I said, some cities stop work, stop permitting, um.
It's hard to stop permitting when they just do it without the permit in the first place.
Well, no, I mean, when things.
We hold up, we hold them up.
Until we get, until we get mitigation, until we get the civil fines paid, we, you hold them up.
Well, what civil fines would there be tied to not following the development procedures?
So, I think, um, it would be, and, see, that's, that's the hard part, putting a monetary value on, on what they've done to what help, what harm they've caused to the city. That's, that's hard to determine.
We have to be careful, though, if you put too, uh, too much fine or something, it could, it could work against you, but when plantation apartments there, the last clear cut they did on the, uh, uh, they stopped the work, you know, we said, we're not gonna allow you the permit to continue.
Exactly.
And they sat there for eight, ten months, just sticks, and no work, and, uh, and that's, that's not a good thing either, because you want the double, and once it continues to finish.
Well, I think they were waiting on them to come back and plant things.
They were, no, they're, no, the reason why they were held up was their choice, it was their choice, it was supply chain and everything else, that's, it had nothing to do with any kind of restrictions or anything on it, they just, they decided that it wasn't good to continue construction from the point that they did, so it wasn't anything we did. But anyway. We have some people that, that had some comments, so we'll go ahead and go, uh, Mr. Hunter, on this item?
Well, the subject of trees is always an interest of mine, and I love trees, and I love the shade they provide, and how they really take care of our environment for us. Um, I, I heard your, your comments about homeowners can do whatever they want, basically, it's their property, it's their tree, they can cut it down if they want to. And, and I really don't want to put those kinds of restrictions on people, that's their private property and stuff like that, but I, I witnessed on Batway Street, a neighbor that purchased a home that was gorgeous, it had four beautiful, five beautiful pecan trees. And immediately cut them all down, and I don't know why, West Stompster sitting there, he didn't even have them ground. I mean, it's, and just, he's still got one of them, he's taken all the branches away, and it still sticks up in the backyard, and he got a ladder leaning against it, like, he's gonna cut it down a little at a time. The best I could guess is he wanted to get sunlight to his garden, which is just not a garden at all, it's just a pile of weeds. So, you know, I would like to see, it's just my personal feeling, my comment, you know, some way that, that, you know, if a neighbor has to cut down a tree, it should be for some legitimate reason, you know, that's, it's destroying his, his slab. Um, it's too close to the home for insurance purposes, it might fall, it's in such bad condition, it would fall on the home and cause injuries. You know, these are all legitimate reasons for cutting trees down, but this guy had no reason whatsoever. The trees weren't close to the home, the house had no, it's foundation issues, you know? Anyway, just my opinion on that. Anyway, just my opinion on that, um, keep, keep that in mind when you think about this. I mean, we got a beautification pro- process within the city, we plant trees, hundreds I guess, over a period of a year. And we have, we got people needlessly cutting trees down, it's kinda stupid.
Okay. Sheri, did you, okay, alright, uh, Justin.
Justin Puyol, uh, eighty-nine, nineteen Japonica Drive, outside of Rosenberg. Uh, I live in a neighborhood, uh, where all the homes on my street and the streets around me were built in the last three years, if I wanted to, uh, buy a home like that in Lake Jackson, where would that be? I'm asking factual.
Creekside.
Three years, Creekside.
Creekside, and, and how, how many homes are there?
Hundred and something.
Yeah, and then Northwood as well.
And Northwood is another hundred and forty, I think.
Okay, so about three hundred homes and, and how long has that been, uh, how, how long have those projects?
There's also, there's also the grid that was in here earlier that they're developing too, so.
Okay, where is that one?
That's off of WeChat.
Okay, and, um, what's the status of the, I think it's called like Alden or something like that? And that is still occurring?
It's, it's still up to the, the owner and, uh, prospective buyers to, to develop it, yeah.
So it's not really progressed in the past few years?
No.
Okay.
That's not in our control.
Um, so I think about things like why isn't there more residential development, I see apartments, uh, I, you know, there's been a lot of new apartment buildings, I think another one's going in and and I just wonder, is that going to bring in the long-term wealth and tax base needed to support fancy city of enchantment downtown? And then I wonder why, uh, these developments, you know, you have a few small ones, but the big one, and I was reading in, in the fax, something about, um, Angleton to grow by thousands of rooftops, uh, two thousand residential lots on eight hundred and seventy acres adjacent to the city limits. So certainly they're a little closer to Houston, but I wonder if they're doing something a little bit different, and then we can even see an ordinance with some, I guess, some red lines on it at the first read, at the first meeting it came up with, because this is about power and control, I think the quote was, to make it more painful for developers. This is Texas, and there's a reason why I think some people don't live in this city and don't spend money in the city and don't build or buy homes in the city. And it's this mentality that if you're not going to do whatever the administration or the council majority feels people should live their life like, then it just doesn't feel welcoming, so you go elsewhere. And without development, some, we're in levee, like we're in levees for most of the acreage. Sometimes you've got to clear the land to develop something really nice, I think some of the newer stuff here is pretty nice, there's not many mature trees, hey, plant a live oak, li- in fact, I, I encourage you tonight at the meeting or afterwards, read about live oaks, they grow almost like weeds. You can plant a nice live oak and in twenty, especially thirty years, it's beautiful. So this generational thing, it doesn't take generations to have nice trees. Private property owners care about their property more than anyone else, who, like, are, y'all really care about their property more than they do? If they thought that they would lose mu- you know, people like trees, right, so if they could keep that tree, they would keep that tree so they could sell a lot or have people in park under their parking lot under the nice, pretty shade tree. I, I really don't think anyone's being that destructive that they're purposely just killing nice, mature trees for the heck of it, because those trees are the most valuable to that private property owner, to that developer. Uh, Leon Valley, Texas, where I worked, uh, covered a lot, they, they made their tree ordinance a, a real big deal, fortunately not quite this bad, y'all are inching up on them. And it's these kinds of things, um, especially in aggregate, once you get more and more of these nanny regulations, the developers go, yeah, there's acreage and further north and, golly, the Brazos River kind of floods sometimes, we'll just pay a little bit more per acre and develop further up. I really caution this body on literally, I, I mean, that came third hand, so maybe he didn't really say to make it painful for people. We should wanna empower people to be, hey, if trees are that important, how about a positive route, hey, we will give you special econo- and I'm against economic development stuff, but y'all do that here, so you know, special economic development if you keep the nice, mature trees, does it always have to be about pain from city master? I really, I really hope y'all consider these things, maybe I'm the only one, but that, th- these kind of threads that I'm bringing here are why I don't live in this city. I fundamentally like this city and the people who live here, but it's this government that pushed me out. There's some things to think about, thank you, Mayor and Council.
The, the challenge with us on residential development is, is, as you put it, all the different requirements we put on people, it's because we don't have the land. There is no land, and as available land, we have no problems with development of it. And, um, yes, uh, when you start talking about residential, yes, people do value their, their trees and, uh, it va- and it adds value to their property, the trees. Uh, when a tree falls down on your property, you can actually go to your homeowner's insurance and get, uh, reimbursed for that value of that, that tree, that mature tree on your property. At least my insurance does that. Uh, but then we do have, the reason why the ordinance is there is because we have had, uh, businesses that have come in that have cho- chosen not to, uh, respect, uh, our desire to have mature trees in our city where we can, and they have completely clear cuts, they had no value of those trees. They had no value for the community other than that they wanted to come in and bring their business here. So, which again, we greatly appreciate them bringing their business, but we would like for them to partner with us as much as possible, just like you're talking about. We should be partnering with them, we, we, we try our best to partner with all businesses and development that comes into the area. Uh, we've had, every time we've had a big box come in and wants to put in a new, uh, structure, they always come back and say, well, after we give them all the requirements, either be landscaping or parking requirements, they always, their response back is, well, is that all? Because they're used to higher restrictions than what we have on landscaping and so forth. So we don't arbitrarily just come up with these numbers, uh, when it comes to these requirements, we've, we've gone after and seen, then seen what is out there in the marketplace. So we can continue to be competitive, but again, at the end of the day, we just don't have blank, open property. Northwood is being developed, it's probably the net last, uh, component of Northwood that's gonna be able to be developed because of, of, of the, the, uh, of the trees and because of the floodplain. Uh, so, uh, and then, uh, as far as Alden goes, is, uh, Alden's a prime piece of property. It's the last place where you don't have to build up to be able to build there and so forth, so the owner knows that he has a prime piece of property. And so he's waiting as long as he has to, to get the best price for the property he has there. And again, we've, we've tried our best to work with, everybody's brought to the table, and, uh, it's just he hasn't made it work out a deal in many, many years. And we've, we've put, uh, infrastructure out there already ahead of time to, uh, improve the ability to develop that, that property, and, uh, again, it just hasn't happened.
Thank you for that information, Mayor, I would just encourage a carrot stick approach instead of the authoritarian approach, sometimes the city gets heavy-handed and I'm not sure y'all can wait forever to develop, I mean, the lots and everything, they're, they're getting older, so it's, needs to happen sometime.
But we do, where we're allowed by the restrictions that we have by our state legislature, we do use the carrots that are available to us. We're the, one of the first cities to use what's called a three eighty, a chapter three eighty, that's what brought all the development, bringing coals in, that, that, uh, brought in HEB, it brought in improvements at the mall and so forth, and movie theaters and all that kind of stuff, so we do use those tools that are available to us. Which again, a lot of people like, don't agree with those tools either, there's people that think that we shouldn't be using those tools, you know, uh.
And I would be in that camp too.
I'm sure you're not a big fan of abatements, and we don't do, you know, tax abatements like the county does and so forth, but, uh, we don't oppose them, but we don't do those. But we do use tools, like I said, the three eighty is available, and, uh, again, the three eighty is a non-destructive form of abatement. Uh, so if they don't perform, the way our abatements, our three eighties are set up is, is it's only there is if they deliver what they say they're gonna deliver, as in additional sales tax. If they deliver additional sales tax, well then they get a percentage of it for a period of time. And so it's a win-win, we look at those as a win-win for the community. So we try to use the tools that we can, that we have available to us as much as possible. Um, but we do, we do enjoy our, I mean, they're, they're, every time trees come up, we have, you know, I, I'm, I'm just like everybody else here, there has to say is that when your home was built, a tree had to come down. And so, uh, but we try to again, look and see where we can to try to, especially in large developments, to see what, any of those majestic trees that they can be saved. But like with Northwood, no tree was gonna be able to be saved because they were gonna have to raise it by four feet. So no tree was gonna be able to survive.
And that's unfortunate aspect of development, I just can ask you to consider that the private property owners, even on the way, they don't do things exactly how every one of us would like it. It's unfortunate, but it is.
And even with Northwood, with Northwood, we did use a tool, we used a pit. There's a lot of people here, there are a lot of people in here that didn't want that. But we made that available to, to enable the developer to move forward with that project. So we could have been strong-handed and say, no, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna support you, but we wanted the development to get that, to, to get that, those new homes put, put into our city, so that's why we went in that direction.
Alright, thanks Sheri.
Use that tool.
And two quick things, um, with the tree thing, one of, one of my concerns is that when you do have a deal with the developer and you agree on certain things, and they agree on, okay, we're gonna have an arborist come in, or we're gonna try to save this many trees. And then they go behind and just arbitrarily, don't even attempt to keep their word with the deal that we all agreed upon in the first place, then a five hundred dollar fine is nothing. Um, and that's really probably what led to this discussion is nobody has been heavy-handed, and so no, none of these developers have been, um, forced to keep their word, and that is important when you're doing business, is that you're doing business with people who, um, keep their word, you know, what you sat down, you talked about, and you were transparent about, and you agreed upon. So that's one thing, and then the second thing is, and I probably have struggled with this somewhat, cause I didn't grow up in Lake Jackson, I grew up in Angleton. Um, is, one of my problems with the state legislature in recent years is they like to do these one size fits all. They wanna, they want Lake Jackson to be the same as Surfside, the same as Dallas, the same as Houston. And one of the things that's good about this community is you have a whole lot of different types of cities right here in Bexar County. Lake Jackson is not the same as Angleton, is not the same as Danbury, and each one of these cities does have the right, and I will defend the right, whether I defend the individual, you know, can't have rabbits or can't have chickens, I will still defend the right of the community to dictate what kind of community they want. Um, you know, maybe, maybe there are a group of people that like living in the nanny state, you know? And then there's those of us who don't like that, you know, you have choices in where you settle. And that doesn't mean that any of those can't change, you know, I mean, clearly we're up here pushing for some, some changes, and I'm a big believer in private property rights. But you still, and I have to do that sometimes, I have to step back and say, okay, this isn't about me or what I want, what is this community overall, you know? And Lake Jackson is different than Angleton and Surfside, and we have to respect that as well. So it's, it feels like a fine line to walk sometimes, is what I'm saying.
Well, I'd say that the city is not a homeowners association and people, the city develops, certainly not from a nanny regulation, obviously this is a very industrial area, and in many cities, they would probably fight that. Um, so there's not vouchers to relocate people who disagree with how things are done, so it turns out that people can come up and lodge their grievances before the board, and if the board disagrees and nothing moves, then you know, maybe they decide to leave, but we still have the right to challenge some of these ideas and.
I'm all for that.
That's why I'm here.
I think everybody up here is all for that, you know, like I said, I walk a fine line up here sometimes from looking at, you know, I'm sitting here listening to the hunters. You know, I don't disregard what they say, I don't necessarily agree with it, but you have to listen because there are people who live in this community. And they want a certain type of community, and Lake Jackson was built in a certain way from the beginning. And it wasn't built the same way that Angleton was built. Um, and so that's something that I feel like is each of our jobs, is to sit here and you gotta kind of weigh those things out, you know?
Sure, and I understand, and again, I'm, I'm not just, you know, blowing wind when I say I left here because of these issues, like I spend my money elsewhere because of, there was things that didn't work out for me to buy a house here.
Things you didn't agree with, sure, sure.
And so I, I'm just letting this board know, and I've, uh, articulated these things to other city administrators and former city administrators in the past, so I am here before the board, uh, because basically I, I, the city manager never, isn't responsive to me, so that's why I'm coming to the meetings now. I appreciate, and I, and I, I think these are all valid points, and I'm glad that we're able to have this dialogue instead of wanting to cancel everyone, I think this is great, thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you.
So is there a certain direction y'all wanna go on with these trees, with the, not with the trees, but with the developers and clear cutting, is there any sort of direction? Do you want some time to think about it, do you want more information?
I, I think that with the developers, when they come in and they agree to sort of, whatever we sit down and have, if we say that we're gonna agree, they're gonna keep fifty of these trees, then they need to keep fifty of these trees, and if they choose not to, um, keep their word, that I think it needs to be more than a five hundred dollar fine. Because they don't, I mean, that's just, they're indifferent to that.
Well, that case could be, that case could be per tree.
It would be per tree or per.
Per acre.
Per half acre or, I don't know.
But are you, but you're talking about a situation where they don't come to us and agree ahead of time.
Oh, no, it'd be any, it'd be any, it's, it's, it doesn't matter, I mean, she brought up a really great point.
But again, the, on the developer and plantation, for example, is, is that, uh, they had defined a tree that they were gonna save. Uh, and we all agreed upon that, and then next thing we know is Eddie's coming, coming over and saying, well, they just took that tree down. And it's because their contractor that was cutting the drive for the driveway hit the roots and made a decision on his own that, well, since he hit the roots, that tree wasn't gonna survive, so they took it down.
Okay, well then the contractor probably didn't know.
Right.
But, so they should be marking the trees, that's better.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they should be putting red fencing around it.
And, and we did that with the, the, this Lakewood, correct? Cause that was right before I came on council, but I came to those planning meetings, and they were supposed to mark the trees.
I was require, I was saying, we need to have the requirement of, that we mark the trees with the fencing, so that nothing goes inside that fencing, and what I wanted was that there was gonna be a penalty if somebody goes in and does work inside the fencing, but we never did do that.
Well, okay.
So in this case, you know, the plat, landscaping plan and the plat plan was already approved when this happened, clearing, so they.
Was it?
Which thing?
Uh, Northwood.
No, it's.
No.
No, it wasn't, okay.
He's the expert on what.
I was gonna say, this all sounds like stuff I heard when I was liaising with Planning Commission, so I'm not, are we giving them direction with this ordinance too, or?
This, this, the ordinance came about from two, uh, in, in particular, two situations now. And both of them did not have any site plan associated with it, it didn't have any plat associated with it. It was so happens that the owner of the property decided to take it on his own in the middle of the night or in the weekend to go out there and clear cut either unbeknownst to the ordinance or in, in full knowledge of the ordinance, in trying to, to, uh, to eliminate those type.
If they didn't ask for forgiveness then permission.
Correct, whenever there's a site plan and there is an understanding between the developer and the city and the planners of what is gonna remain, what is gonna be, uh, provided for in this particular landscape, there's not a, oh, I mean, there, there is a problem, but I mean, there will be a problem somewhere along the lines, but this was primarily the product of people going out there and flagrantly just decided to take it on their own.
So how do we address that?
So, I don't know, should we address that? What, um, that, cause you deal with the developer more than I do, I think that, so, uh, I don't know. What, what do you think would be, be a deterrent?
What's your recommendation?
You could push it back.
A deterrent is, is a have to, uh, fine, there's no tools about that, uh, and five hundred dollars is nothing, I mean, compared to a developer's gotta be spending five, six million dollars on a project, or even more nowadays. So five hundred dollars a day, well, I mean, that's, I'll pay it anytime, anytime, so that I can get, get away with what I can.
So at what point in the development process do I have to get a site plan?
At the very get-go, you have to have a plat.
So, and I really don't, I really don't know the answer to this question, if I, if I could scrape up the money to buy Alden. So, and I really don't, I really don't know the answer to this question. If I, if I could scrape up the money to buy Alden. And I just wanted to farm hay there. Could I just go clear cut every tree?
No.
And plant hay?
No.
Okay. So, so, I guess I.
Is that because of agriculture?
That, yeah, that is.
Help me out there.
That is a, that's a zone R1 development.
Okay.
On that area. Even though it's not planted, it is zoned already R1. The only place where you would be able to do what you're talking about there, clear cutting and, and planting or doing whatever agricultural process. It's in an agricultural land that is not properly zoned. And we do have those around in the area right now. You know, there's an area north of, uh, two thousand and four, right next to the Northwood, Northwood area and beyond Northwood. North, north of Northwood, where those are agricultural lands where people can go out there. We cannot tell anyone to go in there and graze that or pasture that particular property. But in those areas that are zoned already for residential purposes or commercial purposes. You know, this is where the, the law applies.
Okay.
And all the property getting annexed into the city comes in as R1. And then it has to be changed, the zoning as commercial or whatever. So all, everything coming in is R1.
So Sal, is this something that, uh, we really need input from planners on what? And look specifically at the issue of coming in middle of the night and clear cutting.
So actually planners invited Sherri, if she can, you can come to their next meeting.
Oh, I didn't know I had an invitation.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm inviting on your behalf, cause that's what they told me the last planners meeting. Is that correct, Sal?
Would that be the best place to start the discussion?
Last, on the last issue of, of this particular ordinance, they were involved in that.
Right.
But of course they did not say, have any say on, on mining or anything.
But again, I, I think what's got us frustrated is, I think we've got some tools to maybe handle the, after. A plan is put in place. We've been addressing those as cases come up. What we don't have is a tool to keep a developer from buying land today and clear cutting it tomorrow without putting a plot plan in place. And again, the, the challenge that we have there is that the only tool that I know that we would have in place is, is that we would. Penalize them by holding them up on developing. And is that something that planners want to, is that a road planners would wanna go down or recommend to us?
Well, I don't know where state law comes into play in that particular case. Having given so much, uh, I guess, uh, favoritism to the developers.
Right.
They changed, right, a few years ago.
Yes, in the last session, correct.
So many days they had to respond.
Yeah.
Well, that's when they're filing, but they, they're not even doing that.
No, they're not filing it.
So this is.
It's almost like, yeah, all you can do is survey. Anything beyond that is you can't do anything if it's a developer.
If you can come to the planners meeting, next planners meeting.
So, alright, so is that, let me see, so is, let's let planners discuss this a little bit?
Yes.
Cause really, it's, I'm, feel like, I'm getting over my head a little bit.
No, that'd be best. And then we can send the council or whatever planners are coming in.
Yeah, I know Planning Commission takes this kind of stuff very seriously. They literally count the trees based on size and yet it's a very serious thing. And it's, I, I feel like their input would, would certainly benefit me.
And again, at Northwood, you know, if they would have, if the conversation would have happened like it should have. There probably would have been agreement is, you're gonna raise it by four foot. You're not gonna be able to save a tree and go ahead and do it. But that didn't happen.
Correct.
And so that needs to happen. That we need to find a way to make that happen.
Correct. And the same thing happened during this commercial development that it's about to take, uh, uh, flight right now. Which is the, uh, storage area at, uh, the Regal Storage Area, two thousand and four. Where they're expanding back to the back in a tree situation there. Uh, they came in here, they explained the project, they, and we didn't have any problem. We realized that what they were gonna have to do is clear cut all that area because they have to elevate that thing about four foot. And at that particular time, we all understood the situation there. So, you know, they did the proper plating that now allows it to proceed with, with this.
Okay.
Staff will get that to planners at their next meeting.
The directions that I would like planners to consider is just that. There needs to be enough of a penalty for not keeping your word. It needs to be impactful for them to agree upon something or to knowingly bypass it.
Understood.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on to item eight, uh, discuss and consider recommendation from Parks Board to implement the new fee schedule. For the Recreation Center and Parks Pavilions.
So before Robin gets started, um, two things. Your decision tonight will not impact the budget. Uh, the budget was set with no increase in any fee. So if you choose not to move forward with these fees, this does not impact our fiscal budget that we are currently in for twenty-two, twenty-three. The other thing is, the reason Ron, or Robin is bringing these is to improve our cost recovery percentage. Um, that's just so we're less dependent on sales tax revenue or any revenue. Um, so that's the only reason these are coming forward and they are not included in the budget. With that, I'll let Robin kinda talk about what she wants to do.
Right, and these were the fees that we brought a few months back that we had discussed and kind of went over with you. As she said, what we're trying to do is again, bring our cost recovery, we'll, uh, bring that up. Of course, we're all facing, you know, increases in so many things. Um, and then some of the fees also are, after we've gone through and kind of done our, when we've done our surveys and stuff. We're actually, um, losing money on certain rentals when it comes to those that we have to staff. Especially anything that has considered lifeguards. Um, we have these kind of parties, I mean, it's, uh, right now, it's currently at a hundred and ten for a full party. We're losing about fifty dollars on every party. So, um, you know, just because of staff increases and things like that. Um, we do try to not do this, um, as often as we, you know, every year. But I think it's something that we need to look at just to bring up and see. One thing I will say is these fees are still lower than, um, any of the rec centers around here that have just recently had increases on it. Was, was there any questions? I don't know if y'all read through it or if you'd like me to read through any of this?
Is there any questions?
And we did get a question, this does not impact South Parking Place Pavilion?
No.
So, just so you're aware, that does not impact this.
This is just, yeah, the park rentals, which is like Dunbar, McLean. Um, we're kind of trying to reorganize some McLean rentals just a little bit on this. Just because we're getting so many big rentals with five hundred or more people. Um, and when those happen, it really impacts the other areas in that park. It's very hard to, to do, so we want to try to.
Yeah. And the more we start concentrating things like skate park, dog park and all, it's becoming a real, a central hub for us. We don't wanna.
Right now, when you have a big event like that, um, you can't rent a small pavilion.
Yeah.
Sometimes if you get a thousand people, which we have a couple of those, the ballpark's impacted by that. Um, you know, so we just either can't do it or we can't, you know, lose the revenue.
And again, the purpose of these new proposed rates is to improve our ability to, to recover costs.
Yes, definitely. And I, I couldn't really tell by looking through the chart here, our residence, cause it was broken up into three tiers, correct? The residential rate, non-residential.
Rec center, no. We dumped to a residential. It's just a flat fee for everyone. Yes, yes. And again, one of the reasons too on the daily passes, um, we really wanna encourage when you get to be where you're, um, it's cheaper to have a day pass than it is a membership. That kind of, um.
Self-defeating.
Yes, so, um, that's one of the things we kind of wanna.
Okay. If there's any other questions, I'll take a motion. Sure, yep.
Are the fees gonna go up for everybody that's going to the swim classes and all? I'm asking because I'm sure when I get this one, they're gonna be.
Yes, it would be, we're, we're looking at a, a, a ten percent increase on membership.
Ten percent?
Yes, we're having.
Cause I know it's, it's gonna happen, I know.
Right, and we'll notify all of our members and let people know. Um, you know, another thing we do is we do offer, um, several of those kind of things throughout the year. You know, we do, in, uh, the beginning of the year, we do new year, new year specials, um, where we give discounts on, on yearly memberships. We do, um, one in February, you know, um, I mean, we really try to get that in and kind of do the membership drives and stuff. Because that's, that's kind of our goal is to get the memberships in. Um, so that's one of the reasons the membership fees were. Where other, other rental things went up twenty percent, um, the memberships, we did keep them at ten.
Okay.
And that also helps us cover a lot of the amenities and things that we offer at the center.
Alright, so will I get a motion on this?
Mayor, I make a motion to, um, implement the new fee schedule for the Recreation Center and Park Pavilions to begin November first, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Alright, move on to item, uh, nine, review Orchard Creek Drive, median cut near Kroger Shopping Center, Sal.
This came back, uh, after your discussion that you had with the developer, Mr. Fanofka. Uh, on the, uh, opening of, uh, of Orchard Creek Drive in order to have access to this particular development. Uh, your, uh, your determination back then was a two-fold one. That you would allow the opening of that particular, uh, uh, median there. Under, with the condition that they have a deceleration lane. And that also that, that the City of Clute initiates some type of an arrangement. For a cross-axis agreement with the, uh, uh, marketplace developers. That at this particular time had a, right now had a prohibition of, of that. So those, those are two of the islands that were imposed by you in your last meeting. Uh, they are coming back now. They approached, they, uh, sent us their, I mean, the original plan. Which was to have that deceleration lane. At that, uh, at that time, we went back and you could, is that thing, uh?
Do, man.
You can enlarge that area about there if there is any such needs and really appreciate that situation, okay. Uh, so there was gonna be the deceleration lane, I'm coming into the, uh, property going, uh, eastbound. And you also had that deceleration lane come, going westbound into the property. Uh, when they approached, when they sent us that original draft there, of what, uh, after discussion with the city manager. Uh, recommended that we, uh, not only do that, but that we added extra, uh, an extra acceleration lane. Going, uh, eastbound, as you can tell from, from that particular area. And also that the, uh, opening at the median there being increased there to that particular length. In order for us to be able to provide at least a refuge of portion of the lane there. If any, if any, uh, crossing traffic found themselves in a situation where there was a high speed. Or, uh, a significantly amount of people there and getting, and if they got caught in there in between, that they were able to take refuge. In that particular portion of the, uh.
Right.
You have to, uh, that was accepted or that was, uh, the, uh, the developer accepted that, those are the conditions. And therefore that's what they were proposing. They are aware about the second item, which was that City of Clute, which in this particular case, we're, we're told that there are in the process of talking. Where in the process they are, we don't really know. Uh, but that is still, one of, one of the items is still gonna be right and held into account. Uh, before we actually make the final release of, of this particular opening.
So I just wanna clarify, this has already been discussed and approved. They just need to ensure that this shows exactly what you were thinking before they go out and get cost estimates.
So, uh, it's to my understanding, we didn't approve any of this last week.
Correct. Well, you, you, you allowed them to move forward with it pending that they met your two, yes, sir?
Right.
I don't think so.
Yes, sir. It was as long as they met your two items that Sal just spoke about.
If they get a cross-cut agreement, then they won't need this.
No, sir, it was contingent on both, sir.
The cross-cut, what are you talking about?
No, the cross-access.
Crossback, break access.
The, the cross-access was going to be required, is required.
Yes, sir. Both are.
But originally, they were asking for this because they didn't have that agreement.
Right, and they still don't have the agreement yet.
So if they get the agreement, why do they need this? Because see, we're gonna have.
We've, we've talked about this last time, is that?
And, and I'm gonna talk about it again.
They need two entrances. We're, we're saying they need two entrances.
Well then, don't cross, don't allow this cut here. Even with that, you're creating a problem. People are gonna make U-turns. They're doing that right now in, on Dixie Drive. Going, coming, trying to go to the pharmacy in Clute, in Kroger at the entrance, at the, uh, uh, Wood Shore entrance. And what they do instead of, it's not wide enough for them to make this turn. So they've come out from this lane, instead of turning lane, they turn from the outside lane and make a big U-turn. So they can take their big truck and make a turn.
So why are they gonna, if they have this cross-cut, why would they be making a U-turn?
No, I'm talking about this, this whole thing, the whole process. Not allowing another opening on.
We said last time we talked, we said they're gonna have two openings. They're gonna have this opening here and they're gonna have the access through the Kroger parking space. And to make this, we said that to go forward with this is that we were requiring them to have a decel and acceleration lane. And that would include the cross-cut, cause the cross-cut, all the other options that they had would require people to make U-turns. The cross-cut doesn't require anybody making U-turn. So there should be a sign over here that's gonna say, no U-turn. Okay? So they can come across here and then go out and they can exit the property or they can come in. The thing that I'm concerned, I have a little bit of concern about here is, Sal, is that we're gonna have an acceleration. And you, you bumping this up and they're gonna have a turn lane right here. I mean, they turn in here is, would it make just sense just to make this a full lane?
I mean, it would make sense, yes.
A full right turn lane?
Yeah, so you have acceleration and, and stuff, so, so that gives them the, if, if the traffic stacks up here or whatever, it's a speeder. They can, they have safety sitting in here until they can jump out there and so forth. So that, that, that's one thing I would think is, instead of doing this curve up here, you just take this as a right-hand. So it's an acceleration lane plus a right-hand turn lane. And that gets people out of the traffic, traffic flow quicker and it would ease things up for, and it's, you know, it's just a little bit of concrete. At the end of the day, I think it's more positive.
So I stand corrected. I, I'm the one who voted no for that, so at that time.
Okay.
And I'm just trying to reiterate my position on that why I voted no. Is we still creating a problem that doesn't exist? Are we creating a problem, a long-term problem? And I think we should reconsider that, that's all I'm saying.
And what I'm saying, what we're saying is, is that we alleviated the long-term problem by providing the cut. Which will not require anybody to do a U. Now, they may choose to do a U if they want to, but there's no reason for them to do it. Because we allowed the cross-cut and we're allowing this exit out of this property. If we, if, if we did not allow this exit out of this property, they're saying is it would be almost impossible for them to sell and develop this property here. With only an entrance out of Kroger, which I would agree.
Well, what was the plan before this got cut out of the other property?
They, they weren't selling that property at the time as much.
Originally, this was gonna, I don't know, we're going way back in the history now.
Well, that.
Way back, originally that particular track.
Well, they, they didn't, they didn't need any of this before and then.
Originally, it was not geared or it was not planned to be a commercial property. It was gonna be part of the residential area.
No, wait a minute, I thought this was always commercial, but they lost the agreement cross, cross, uh.
The very original conceptual plans, the master plans, I meant whole developed that half that area as a, as a residential.
So was Kroger's. So was the Kroger area.
Oh, it's whenever the, the pit or pot or whatever was set up for that area was, that was gonna be Kroger's over there and this was gonna be residential over here.
I just wanna say for the record, I think the whole thing's a bad idea. I think you got too many entrances and exits in that short period of road. And nobody has ever talked about the train backing up there, you know? And, um, I think this is probably the best case scenario to not leave Clute in a bind. I don't like any of it. I think it's, you got too much going on in a short spirit period of space.
Is, originally, Clute was happy with the cross-axis agreement. They said they're gonna, not gonna need that.
I wasn't here for all that. I just went and drove, drove the road and looked at it and it's just.
What's, what, yeah, I mean, I, I tend to agree, Rhonda, I, if you, if you zoom out one click from here, you'll see like a protected, lighted. Four-way.
Ten foot down the road.
Perfectly designed traffic control device and then we're not even like, how, how far from this to here? Yeah, a couple hundred feet. It, it, they, people should be using this right here.
Well, yes, but there's no connection.
There's no access to there.
Right, and that's, that was maybe the, the origin of my original question was, how do we get to the point where we need to do this? And, and why, I just don't understand why it wasn't. why it wasn't maybe done better.
Because we've discussed this all, and we got to this point.
I'm so confused on, y'all voted on this. So why are we talking about three meetings ago? Y'all voted on it. If you didn't want it, don't vote for it.
We started going backwards.
Yeah, unfortunately, council did vote yes contingent on the two things that Sal mentioned, so that's why the developers are not here.
Then what are we talking about right now?
They are just making sure that this plan is what you were thinking.
Option one.
Option A, that they.
It's the best-case scenario.
Yes, just to make sure it reflected your views when you said yes at the last two meetings ago.
I understand all that, but my thing, what I'm trying to say is, they didn't need this because they did not have.
We're past that already. We're past that. We already said, you can continue, you can continue to vote no, we're already past this.
I'm answering the councilman's question. He's asking, what has changed? And I'm saying is, that cross-agreement was not available. They said that we would not give them, so they needed this access. But now we made it contingent on, they have to have this access to be able to do this. And all I'm saying is, if we, they're going to get the cross-cut, cross-axis agreement.
They, the reason, the main reason why they're going after the second cut, they, they, they had already, Clute had already decided that they were going to pursue the second entrance because of safety, be able to get fire equipment in and out, and that the second entrance would provide that. And that's why they're pursuing, pursuing that. But they still, they still need this entrance for it to be successful for them. If they don't have this, it would be very hard for them to market that property.
Yeah, so apologies for any confusion. This is for, I guess, the people that voted yes. Does this meet what you were thinking? Because we had a long discussion, and so it's just ensuring that this meets what you were thinking at that meeting.
Yes, and let's add what the mayor added about finishing that lane. I think that's great.
Make it a right-hand turn.
I've made a note of that, so. Because they are now at the stage where they're going to get cost estimates on this, so they're just making sure before they get that.
And don't let them forget the fifty trees.
Yeah.
He's using that carrot, using that carrot. Yeah, the carrot, okay.
Okay.
So, again, just add the, the right-hand turn lane all the way to the intersection.
We can do that. Thank you.
Okay, so then move on to item ten, fiscal year and financial update. Boy, this is just what we want to hear.
At the end of a long meeting.
We make it.
Spice it up, James.
Backward, backward.
Yeah, that's right.
Obviously, the end of September was the fiscal year end for the city, so I wanted to provide you just a little bit of a snapshot of where we ended the year, because we won't have audited statements, obviously, for about five to six months.
Right.
The auditors were here last week for preliminary. They'll come back in January, by the time they finish the report, probably be in the auditorium. The first page is the investment reports. This is required by the Public Fund Investment Act to be provided to council every quarter. This is why you're giving a snapshot of it, seeing where your cash and investments are. And then I provided the fund balances, so that you can kind of see where the cash is within all the different funds within the city. We finished with close to seventy million dollars in cash, eight million in the operating account, the difference being investments, all for the most part being in the pools, tech pool, tech store, and for the public, your tech store is, the majority of that is your bonds and your grants. So, I was going to, if there's any questions on investments or bonds or the cash position,
and is this information that we can put out on server and stuff, out on website or something like that?
Yes, sir. But the sales tax numbers, the confidential part's been taken out of it.
Right. But the, yeah, this is of some interest for some people.
It is, and, and again, they're not audited statements. That's why, that's why, you know, so I'm kind of giving you the head credit, that the auditors will come in and do the actual numbers. Because there'll be differences with the pools and everything, once we start looking at everything. It's very early in the year. All I was trying to do is kind of give you an idea of where you fit with the budget. So your revenues exceeded your budgets, which is great. Your expenditures were less than what the budget, which is great. So you finished your year well.
Yep.
And so everything in here is just for informational purposes. Same thing with utility funds, you know, consumption was up, revenues were up. I provided you pretty much just the payrolls, because that's the largest expenditure to permit to fly. And so if there's any questions with regard to anything, I'll touch on it, but otherwise, it's mostly informational purposes.
Yes, we can add this to the website. We can add a financial tab.
And this is something you're going to give us quarterly?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That's what the city manager's request is.
Yeah, we did this a long time ago.
And that's why he wanted to kind of get back into it. And this is actually the template that I used, was the one that you had previously received. But if you want something different, we can put that in there. Like, if you want to compare send a prior year or something like that, I can do that. This is just the first time coming to council with it, so that you can get feedback.
All right. Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on any of the pages?
Well, I guess the other question I was going to have is, what about the work we were doing on bonds and stuff?
That's going to be next, the next one, yes, sir. I figured by showing you where the bond money is with this, then we'll go to that discussion. I didn't want to overwhelm everybody tonight.
Well, what he's got is, there's a spreadsheet that we've been working on to give you guys an update, to show you on a quarterly basis where we're at on each one of our bonds, where the dollars are being spent, if we're, you know, where we're at on contingency plans and contingency funds and all that kind of stuff. So, it's, it's a good piece of information for y'all to have reference to, if you have a question, if you have a question or you get a question from a citizen of, where's our bond dollars?
Yes, sir. That's going to be at the next one.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm up again, so I'll just wait for you.
Okay, up again.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you are. Approved resolution nine oh seven, adopting the city's investment policy for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
This is a resolution of the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, approving the city of Lake Jackson's investment policy. Take it away, James.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Again, this is a requirement by state law. The council needs to review the annual, the policy annually. I had three suggestions to change within the policy. I highlighted them for your review. The first page was, the Gatsby no longer uses comprehensive annual financial report. It's called the annual comprehensive financial report, because it's a slur in South Africa.
Right.
So I just wanted to fix that on that page. And if you looked at your investment report, you can see we're kind of heavily invested in pools. So the portion where you talked about diversification, we needed to increase that percentage, so that we would be in compliance where they're on policy. So that's why that was in there. And then lastly, unless you want to see this report monthly, I thought you, which, by law, it's quarterly, so if you want it monthly, then we need to change that section as well. I have no problem giving it to you monthly. We already prepared it. I just didn't know if you wanted to see it each month.
Quarterly is fine.
Okay. So other than that, if there's any, any objection to the changes.
And all of this information, like, that's kind of following up, you said, is available to the public? That's what we're talking about, add a financial tab?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and again, I was fudging around here. So this, again, this explains where our funding is and, and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, where our, this is the investment policy, the investment policy.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, we talked about a little bit the other day, is that we have some in CDs, and we have some in the state stuff, and we're not required to have them in CDs? Is that correct?
No, no, sir. They don't, they want you to be diversified, but there's not a real expectation as to how much of a percentage you need in any.
And what I was explaining to, to James and Modesto, when we talked about this, was is that in some of the groups that, organizations that I'm involved with, they've run up against the same challenge, and that is that, over the history of the organization, they've decided, they decided it would be a good thing to have CDs at local banks. And that was great whenever CDs were paying stuff. But right now, CDs are paying nothing. And there's better places to go invest the dollars. And so, that's why, you know, my challenge back to, to James, I think our challenge should be always, is that we're looking at best ways to invest our tax dollars.
Yes, sir. And if we were going to go, say, into agencies or something, then we'd have to hire a broker, so then you're paying broker fees. So it just kind of, it's easier to keep the money in the pools.
Right.
And that's why, because they've got investors that are knowledgeable in the, in the position.
Okay. Any other questions for James on this? I think it's all great stuff. Just sorry, sorry you had to be at the end of the meeting.
No, no problem, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, James.
All right. I will move on to construction items. We had updates in our packets. Sal's here, if y'all have any questions on any, any of this stuff.
And the only thing I have, we do have our next downtown meeting on Thursday at two PM, if you want to come. It's in this room.
Oh, that's right. Excuse me.
No, go ahead.
I just got corrected by two members, is we have, I need a motion and a second on the resolution.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number nine zero seven, adopting the city's investment policy for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we're all legal and straight. So now, construction, and you're.
Yes, so we have our next downtown meeting, Thursday at two PM, to start our four-week update. The animal control facility, we will be opening bids at the beginning of November, so you'll start seeing more on that next meeting. If anyone has any questions for Sal, he's very happy in the back right now to talk.
Very happy in the back, kicked back. All right. Robin, you have anything else on, other than that the new recreation, the gym lights look great. So I think, I think we should begin some positive feedback on that. And we went with some robust fixtures.
I'll, I'll provide some positive feedback from a parent of a volleyball kid. They're very bright and much better than they were last week.
Okay.
Great job, Robin.
All right. So we'll move on to visitors' comments. JB, you have anything?
No, not visitor's comments. Excuse me, let me back up. Justin, you were down, you want visitor comment, so we do have it, do have it in here, so if you have something to add, sorry.
Yes, sir. Justin Pulliam, eighty-nine nineteen Japonican Rosenberg, outside of Rosenberg. I have a few items, or a item, that's not on the agenda, is that appropriate?
Yes, that's what it's for.
I would like to thank the Lake Jackson Police Department Administration and Records Department. Two weeks ago, I requested public information, specifically phone call recordings. So when you call other police, those are public records that anyone can, you know, hear what are people saying to the police. And these were actually interesting. They were between the Lake Jackson Police Department and the Clute Police Department. And I requested those and received those online very easily, within three days of the request. And they even said, let me know if you have any questions or concerns. I thought it was excellent customer service. I'd also like to thank the Lake Jackson Patrol Department. Basically, Clute Police Department tried to dump a contempt of cop situation on the city to keep people, an individual in a cage for longer. He was arrested in his bedroom because someone called the police on a civil matter. Clute determined that he had an unpaid expired license ticket. So Clute Police came and arrested him in his bedroom. After he bonded out at Clute, they dropped him off over here, where they figured he would have to stay for a little while. Lake Jackson Patrol very swiftly brought the municipal judge up here to get him on a payment plan and back out, so he could take care of his family. I think they're actually moving that weekend. So it was great that Lake Jackson did that, to not continue the insult that this man was facing. So thank you to the administration over there, the records department over there did a great job, and I'm also patrol. And thank you for having me tonight, mayor and council.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. So now, items of community interest. JB? Matt?
I already said mine to Robin, thank you.
Nope. Benay?
The only comment I have, I appreciate your comments about our PD department, because I feel like they're one of the best in the area.
Okay, Chase?
So I asked for five to be removed, just because I wanted to make sure we gave the citizens plenty of time for their feedback before we make a decision on any way. I walked to the neighborhood today for four hours knocking on doors, and I printed out a letter. So if anybody would like a copy of that to hand out, or just to try and get feedback before the November seventh meeting, so we can make an informed decision.
You can give it to Sal and she can get it to us. Great, it's a great idea. Appreciate it. Only thing I said, the only thing I have is just, again, I mentioned everybody, we have new streaming is up and running. And Sal, you correct me on this? Huh? Oh. What's, is it on an agenda item or something else? That's not an agenda. Okay, yes, you can go ahead. Yes, please. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't know the procedure.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. I am Sheila Austin, president of Brazosport Area Alumni Chapter, and this is Dorothy Thomas, who's with me. And we just wanted to come in tonight and just sit and listen to the council. Thank you for having us, and I didn't know the proper procedure of whether I could speak now or what.
Well, you can actually, visitor comments, you could have spoke at the first of the meeting.
Okay.
Or now, we've added it to the end also.
Okay. But thank you so much for having me. This was an ex-student of mine. So, thank you so much. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then, it's, we are doing the new streaming today, and the, really, the real value of the new streaming is, is that it will be indexed. And so if there's just a specific section of the council meeting that you want to go to, you just click on that section, it'll take you to the video. And we will also, there will be the script, right? Text?
Yes.
How quick is all that available?
The indexing should take about twenty-four hours. Give them about a day to get all that situated and on our, on our website.
And then all of the, but there'll be a written version of the?
I will verify that. I, yes, the audio will be there, yes.
I don't know, but there's.
A transcript?
The transcript.
Yes.
The transcript. So how quick does the transcript happen?
That, I'm not sure. The, I talked to them today, and they said it's about twenty-four hours for them to work all the, you know, work it.
And it's still available via the, the city website, no third-party website?
It's on our YouTube page.
Yes, it's on YouTube.
Oh, excellent.
And we have a YouTube page as well.
Lake Jackson City website, under council stuff. Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Anyway, what we can do is, next meeting, just give us a quick overview of what the, what we should expect to be seen.
Sure.
If that'd be great. All right. If I find my gavel. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.